Just as a reminder, this meeting is being cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded. Meetings can also be viewed streamlined from our website. Our technician tonight is Maren Cooley, oh, excuse me, our technician tonight is Alex Said. As a reminder, if you do get up to speak, please do sign your name so that we get it correct in the record and turn off your cellphones during the meeting. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Westman.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Chairperson Smith.
Here.
Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Are there any public comments, since tonight is a special meeting, and we're only going to be taking comments on the items that are on the agenda? But if a member of the public is here to speak and can't stay the full length of the meeting, we'll hear their comments now. Otherwise, we'll hear them with the items. Anybody here who's got time constraints? Excellent. Commission comments.
So, just so I know, are we going to do our comments on the matrix that you gave us before we talk about our new topics, or will that happen at the end?
I think this would be an appropriate time, if you'd like to go through it now.
I'd rather do it at the end if we could.
That's fine.
Just because I would like for everybody to get a chance to review their comments. And if...
Okay, these were about the ones we've already done.
Right, right. I'd just kind of like to get through tonight's because if we start to run late, then I'd like to do those, maybe we even do them at another meeting. Because I'd like for everybody to get a chance to really give their comments. But I'm thinking it might be...
Yeah, and I can just leave mine for you since I won't be here for another meeting.
Okay, well hopefully we'll get to them at the end.
Yeah.
Approval of the minutes?
With approval?
I'd like to ask for a correction on page five, paragraph five. Can we change jury to court? I think it makes a little more sense.
Where's paragraph five?
It comes after four.
I got that part.
My motion stands.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving to the public hearings. Tonight, we will be hearing zoning code updates, issue one, protecting unique qualities of residential neighborhoods, issue sixteen A height in residential neighborhoods, and issue eight, non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Welcome to our fifth meeting on the zoning code update, and I think this will be our final meeting for the issues and options paper. Tonight, we'll be discussing protecting the unique qualities of residential neighborhoods. During the general plan outreach, the theme of protecting residential neighborhoods' character and unique qualities came up again and again. It also came up during when we reached out for the zoning code update, and tonight, it will hopefully come to consensus on how to make sure, ensure that we protect the neighborhood character. Within the general plan, new residential development should strengthen and enhance the unique qualities of neighborhoods. There was also a policy stating that mass, scale, and height of new developments must be compatible with existing residential neighborhoods. And also that architectural character of new development should complement the unique qualities of the neighborhood and overall coastal village and character of Capitola. To protect the unique qualities and ensure compatibility within an updated zoning code, we must identify those qualities and then draft standards to support compatible development. So within your packet, there was, I had broken up the different neighborhoods and some of the unique qualities within those neighborhoods that are really guided by development standards. So not all the unique qualities, such as a design feature on a home or within the yard would be listed there, but really those qualities that can be regulated within a zoning code. So, Capitola's residential neighborhoods are full of charm and identity. Some of the unique qualities of the neighborhoods include inviting front yards, including the landscaping, walkways leading to the homes, and front doors typically oriented towards the street. There's less emphasis on the car, driveways are not allowed to exceed forty percent of the lot width, and garages have increased setback standards. Also, the neighborhoods are known for being compact with little space between homes, except in some areas such as Cliffwood Heights, which have a little more space. And there are typically larger backyards due to the twenty percent requirement for a rear yard setback. Compatibility is often measured by mass and scale and height relative to buildings and its surrounding. Building mass is regulated through the floor area ratio in Capitola. Also, the overall scale is determined through maximum height limits. So now, we'll take a look at how this translates into setting up a new code. Within our existing code, we utilize the floor area ratio. The current code, so within the floor area ratio, we quantify the total maximum building square footage for a new structure. And within the code, we also have used floor area ratio to limit, to include garages, which, that influence your massing. But there has also been requirements for any decks beyond one hundred and fifty square feet count towards your floor area ratio. And we recently had a conversation about changing that, where within Capitola, one of the unique features is the front facade of the home being welcoming. One modification that was directed by this board was that we changed the floor area ratio to include exceptions for decks for the front facade. Also, for homes that are adjacent to open space, to allow homes along SoCal Creek or oceanfront properties to have decks that don't count towards the floor area ratio. There was clarification that the rail corridor is open space, but not to allow it there because it could have impacts on adjacent neighbors. And then within restaurants and hotels, within the general plan, they have a maximum floor area of one typically within the commercial areas. So there, we wouldn't count decks towards the restaurant and hotel floor area ratio. And then there was also the discussion that when we came back for this, a discussion on neighborhood character, that you wanted us to reemphasize, bring back decks and continue to talk about this subject. So I thought I'd include this slide tonight. The next subject for neighborhood character that is determined within a zoning code is height. This was also talked, we talked about this at a previous meeting and asked that it come back during our neighborhood character discussion. Height, right now, is regulated at twenty-five feet within the single-family zone. There is a height exception of up to twenty-seven feet for half-story designs and buildings that use historic design elements. During the previous discussion, there was consensus to take out the exception for a half-story design, and also that the historic design element, it just was not clear how the exception could be applied. For tonight, I was going to introduce four new options within height. One is twenty-seven feet for a roof pitch greater than five-twelve. I believe that the historic design element exception was put in place for steeper roof pitches. So it's clearer to apply by stating what that roof pitch would be and how to go higher, what the allowance would be. Also, during a previous meeting, we talked about allowing a height exception for larger lots. And I also added lots with a width of sixty feet, because if it's, if it's the height having an influence on neighborhoods that you want to avoid by having an adequate width for a lot, you can ensure that the impact won't be as large on the neighbor. And then also, how, a height exception for lots on steep slopes. So I'll go through those now. The first is a height exception for a roof pitch greater than five-twelve. In these images, you can see what the different roof pitches look like and how a more traditional roof is typically, has a greater pitch and how that could be applied. Next, a height exception for lot sizes. Within this image, this is a map that the different lot sizes are broken down. Your, the light green are parcels up to about seven thousand square feet. The darker green is from seven thousand to just under eight thousand. And then the blues, as they get darker and into the purple, the parcel sizes get larger. So within this map, you can start to see trends of the area, the small neighborhood near the Forty-First, up here. And then also Cliffwood Heights, are the two areas of town that really have a pattern of larger lots. So in creating a new standard for additional height, we can utilize this map to say which threshold you'd like that new height established at. So once you get into the, any of the colored parcels on this map are six thousand feet or greater. And once you get into the seven thousand to seven ninety-nine, that's the darker green. And once you get into blue and purple, you're really looking at Cliffwood Heights neighborhood and some areas along Wharf Road. And then some parcels in the smaller neighborhoods that have been joined, so, when there's merged, I should say. Next is an exception for when there's a wider lot to allow homes to go higher. So in this image, you see your typical forty-foot wide lots. And in a situation where two lots have been merged and there's eighty feet, possibly allowing for an additional two feet on those wider lots, knowing that their shading won't be shading out the neighbor next to them. And also looking at an exception for steep slopes. These are some homes in the back as viewed from Riverview, they're on the back of Wharf. And how this is definitely, they were built under a different height standard, or they received a variance at the time. So now, under our, how we measure height, the home would have to step down with the lot. There is reason at times for allowing greater height on steep slopes. In this example, you can see the approach of a driveway going to a garage, and it meets, if it were to meet the front yard setbacks, and then you were to build the garage. Sometimes you run out of room to have the full depth of a garage that's needed. So in this image, you could fit the smart car. But if you went up to an additional two feet, the garage could come out further, and then you could fit a standard vehicle or truck possibly. So I did want to mention within this slide, it's a good argument for a variance here. So this may not be one that you want to add to your zoning code. And typically, when you're looking at variances, you're looking at specific circumstances tied to the lot, and this would be a great example for why you would support a variance. So in talking about height, this is just to reemphasize the four new options that we can be looking at tonight. Next, another neighborhood character, as you're going through the R1 zone, there are certain lots along Riverview, and there are a few in Depot Hill that are thirty feet wide. And they're really narrow compared to the majority of lots are forty feet plus in width throughout the city. So this is a map showing all of the lots that are thirty feet wide. So you can really see the presence of them along Riverview and then a few within Depot Hill. Currently, the code requires a side yard setback of ten percent for the first story, and then fifteen percent of the lot width for the second story. On a forty-foot wide lot, it's not problematic, and it typically creates a great design. Within a thirty-foot wide lot, your bottom story is at twenty-four feet for the first story, and then the second story is limited to about twenty-one feet in width. So here, it's to possibly add an exception for lots thirty feet wide or less to not have to have a second story additional setback. Another pattern you see throughout the single-family district is secondary structures that are located in the rear yard. This is in Upper Riverview, you can see the yellow dots are secondary structures. Then I went on GIS and did my best job I could of estimating through the aerial images of how many driveways exist that lead to a secondary structure. It may be a garage, it may be a unit, I'm not sure, but there's quite a few that have pavement leading to a secondary structure in the back. Within Capitola, due to the parking issues in many of these neighborhoods, these are often a good thing to have additional, you know, longer driveways in which people can park in. And if it is a driveway in the garage in the back, to be able to utilize that space as well. So currently, many of these would be non-conforming, because the setback requirement for an accessory structure is eight feet from the rear property line. And a lot of these looked really close. So to maintain this pattern that you see within our neighborhoods, it could be, you could either decrease the rear yard setback for accessory structures, or you could add an exception under your non-conforming area to state that a non-conforming garage, and specifying that it's a garage so that you're mitigating, helping to mitigate the parking, located within a setback may be upgraded but not expanded. So within the options for neighborhood character tonight, the first is to maintain the existing code, and I've taken out the height exception as directed at a previous meeting. But same height requirements, front yard, garage setbacks, rear and side yards in second story. The second option is to introduce tailored development standards for individual residential neighborhoods. So here's the map from the general plan. An example of how to do this would be each of these neighborhoods becomes an overlay zone. And within the overlay, you would make development standards for each overlay. And here's an example for height. So in this example, Cliffwood Heights could have a height limit up to twenty-seven feet, and the others would remain as they are today. And then next is allow case-by-case deviations to the R1 standards. To do this, we could have findings, it wouldn't be a variance, but just findings that the deviation that's requested reflects the prevailing character in a neighborhood. So looking at its surroundings and making sure it's compatible, and that also it will not negatively impact adjacent properties. So those you would look at individual case-by-case deviations when they come before planning commission. And then the fourth option is something that has been created from the outcome of our other discussions, is a hybrid option, and it's some of the ideas that I introduced tonight. Introducing development standards based on specific characteristics of the lot or the design. So within this option, we could create new height exceptions as presented. Within the side yard second story, you could have an exception for lots of thirty feet wide or less, and then also exceptions for accessory structures in the rear yard. So from there, we appreciate discussion from the commission, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Questions for staff, comments?
First question is, I didn't understand the part about floor area ratio exceptions for restaurants that have a one point oh floor area ratio.
So for a hotel, within the general plan, there is a limit for the floor area ratio. And when calculating the floor area ratio, if we took out the requirements for a deck, so if there was, say, a dining deck on a second story of a hotel, that would not count towards the floor area ratio calculation, the maximum floor area ratio for the general plan standards.
Would it count toward parking?
That was actually one of the questions I had, because when I went back and I read what we had done. You know, I look at a place like Zelda's, you know, their deck is bigger than their restaurant is. So for me, I suddenly became very uncomfortable with having an exception from the floor area ratio, because that's what parking is going to be based on. So I'm not at all comfortable with leaving that exception in there. I don't know how other people feel, but I didn't realize we were talking about, you know, because if you were a smart developer on your hotel, I mean, you'd have a huge outdoor dining area that was a deck, and then you don't have to provide any parking for it.
So similar to the basement conversation that we had previously, we could require, we could do the calculation for parking to include it, for the parking requirement, but if you wanted it not to count towards the massing. Because for basements, I believe the direction was to not include basements towards the floor area ratio, but it will be counted towards the parking requirement, so.
And I thought when we were talking about the restaurants, that it was the number of seats that is going to determine the parking requirement. So if you've got a big deck or whatever, it's the number of seats.
Aren't we changing it to square footage to determine the parking requirement? We're getting rid of the whole counting of seats.
So one clarification, I mean, the code currently bases parking standards on floor area, not floor area ratio, which is more of a mass. So I think, as Katie kind of alluded to, in terms of considering the parking requirements, you would look at any areas where you could have seating.
Yeah, I feel comfortable counting it toward parking, but not counting it towards floor area, because I think we're, I don't really know how it will apply and allow someone to garner more seating in reality, because they're still going to have to grapple with the parking problem. But I do think anytime we can encourage people to be outside, it's good for retail, for the ambience of an area, and it's good for human beings to be outside. So I, in principle, I like the idea of encouraging outdoor activities, one way or another.
Right, I hear what you're saying. My concern is that, for example, if someone comes in and they want to build a hotel, and as part of their hotel development, they're going to have a, let's say, five by ten, fifty-foot deck on each room. You know, when you start adding all of that to the building, it's certainly going to increase the size of the mass of the building. And I understand that, you know, you want to encourage people to have outdoor decks, but I'm not certain that we want to just completely exempt them and not count them at all. Do we want to put some limit on the size of the deck that we don't count? I mean, I like your idea, as long as, you know, they're going to be accounted in the parking calculation, so.
So they could be a percentage of the interior of the building, you know, no greater than X percentage of the interior of the building, so that there's some balance between interior and exterior, and it's, we build in some safeguards.
There was a limit on the exception.
Yeah.
And you could separate it out between areas that are common space, that are shared, such as your dining area that counts towards your parking. But if it's a hotel and you have a small deck per suite, then maybe you don't count that towards the overall parking space, because that's part of the suite in which nobody's occupying.
Yeah, I mean, it would be fine with me if there was a limit that you don't count decks that are, say, more than a hundred square feet. I mean, that's a pretty good-sized deck. But you don't want someone to, you know, build a penthouse and, you know, I mean, the deck is going to be part of the building. It's not like it's going to be part of the mass and the size of it. And that's so important to, I think, the people in Capitola that, I mean, I agree with Gail, we want to encourage the outside space, but I don't want us to do something that we later come back and regret and say, oh, my gosh, how did, how did they get to do that? So if there's some limits on the size and that it does count for parking, then it starts to make more sense to me.
But in the neighborhoods, are we including the residential and the commercial? Or are we really specifically talking about neighborhoods and residential structures that have decks attached to them?
Your side said restaurants and hotels were exempt.
Yeah, I think we're just talking about restaurants and hotels.
Right.
That was my question. I'll pull up the definition that we currently have.
The other way, the other place in our ordinance is where we apply these kinds of things, is front porches, covered front porches of a certain, I think it's two hundred and fifty square feet, up to two hundred and fifty square feet are not covered in floor area.
That's fine with me.
And that's good, so I think we're moving in that same direction, where we, where we have a certain, either a percentage or a square footage.
So my next question, you ready for?
That precipitated me.
My next question is a clarification of this, there seems like an awful lot of commentary on the difference between twenty-five feet and twenty-seven feet, which is, seems like a small difference.
Two feet.
Yeah, two feet, maybe. And so I'm kind of curious as to, from the plans you see and what's going on, I mean, how is this two feet, other than slope lots, which I understand the problem there? I mean, are we talking about the difference between two stories and three stories? And that's really important in the floodplain now, because the first story, you can't build on. So you have to be able to go three stories to build anywhere in Riverview now.
So the reason for the height exception, from my perspective, as going through this process and talking with stakeholders, was to allow more flexibility in design. So that some of the, it was the architecture and design group that really was asking for more flex, for the new zoning code to allow more flexibility. So that's why the, you know, the minimum five-twelve pitch I put in there, you know, where, but that's really the root of where this request is coming from. And then the twenty-seven has been put in there, because that's what we've had.
And that's only really going to apply to old historic buildings, because nowadays, I mean, people are, as I say, are, they're going to want to use the difference between twenty-five and twenty-seven to get... twenty-five and twenty-seven to get the third story. That's what, and is that, I mean, kind of close on building.
I mean, I think you can get three stories at twenty-five feet, there's a couple of examples of it, you probably have lower ceilings, so it might.
You have a flat roof, for sure.
Right, you have a flat roof.
So there's the design element. I mean, if you want to do three stories, have any kind of pitch in your roof, twenty-five doesn't allow you.
Yeah, Tori's house across the street from Gail is three stories, and it's twenty-five.
And what's the downside to twenty-seven? I mean, is that like a terrible thing for the neighbors?
It could allow the scale to be a bit different, you know, the scale's very low in many of the neighborhoods in Capitola, so your floor to top of wall would get higher. You could essentially, under a twenty-five or twenty-seven foot height, you can have your ten-foot ceiling. It's really a matter of the design and looking at the scale as they come through. I don't think there's a huge difference between a twenty-five and a twenty-seven foot height, but as you, as you allow to twenty-seven feet, you could see your wall heights get taller, which could throw off scale in neighborhoods.
You already have twenty-seven feet in the village. We're just talking about the R1.
Do other communities, is this, I mean, is this a big deal, twenty-five feet around the state?
Ben?
No.
It varies greatly from community to community.
You know, for me, I know we had this discussion about the village, and it kind of applies, in fact, before we built our house, we actually had plans drawn and actually went through the city with them. And the height of our house, a two-story house, was twenty-six feet, six inches, because it had the glass, you know, sunroof that's along, along the ridge, and that added another six inches, which was, and the house, this is, you know, our lot's eighty feet wide, but it was going to be a problem getting through the, we did actually get the plans through, but we ended up lowering the roof design. So in that house, we had a nine-foot roof height on the first floor, and then vaulted ceilings on the second, and you easily can get to there with a sec, which, to me, I'm not, I think adds character and design in neighborhood, but I'm not, me, what I'm not really open to is all these flat roofs. I just, to me, I just think they take away from character and design. And I was talking with the staff before the meeting about, I was looking from Grand down over the village the other day, and a good example of it to me was the apartments that are down on the corner of Espinade. You can kind of see, it's hard to see unless you can zoom in there, but the apartments, and then right next to it is the Six Sisters. So you know the apartments that are down? And if you, you look at the design, I mean, the Six Sisters obviously have character and design that Capitola, I hope, would like, but, and it's a two-story with a dormer, so you could, you could actually, yeah, it's tough to get in there and get that view, huh? Oh, there you go. So here you go. So now you have basically the same roof height, a three-story versus a two-story, and then actually you could probably get some dormers and that. To me, the character of the Six Sisters over the three-story flat roofs is quite a bit, is quite significant. So, that's why I was in favor of a plate height, a top plate height, and allow the roofing to be a little more flexible, because it adds a lot more character than just, that's what we're going to end up with, those apartments, I think, with, if we just go with a flat twenty-seven foot, and that's what you get, I think you're going to end up with a lot of these down in the, and we already have a couple of them in the village. I hate to see that up in our neighborhoods as well.
Right. But I, for me, you know, we've got the three-story building there, and if you put, you know, a fairly steep pitched roof on it, suddenly, I mean, you have quite a tall building down there in the village.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, you could do a plate height. So if you look at the Six Sisters, where the top plate is, where the ridge line comes down, that's the limit, but it allows the character of a roof line in there, as opposed to letting your plate height go all the way to the twenty-seven feet maximum. Does that make sense?
So what you're saying is that you only want to have two-story structures.
Well, in this one, they maybe will get a dormer up in the third floor if they want it or something, so they could have some access in the Six Sisters, but it gives it more character than just a flat roof of a full third story.
Can I bring up a point about the flat roofs? Because I agree with you. I think the kinds of flat roofs we used to see back in the sixties and seventies were for economic reasons, they were the cheapest way to build a house, to get a lot of volume. You traditionally will see them in older buildings, not very attractive. But I, what I see now, and I'm not even sure it's the character of Capitola, but I see more modern articulated homes with flat roofs now, that are really a lot more attractive and very stylized, and I do, we've approved several of them, and we've got them in Capitola.
Yeah, there's one on El Camino Media that's, but it's really got like a one or two, maybe a one, one-half, one-twelve pitch roof, it's got a little bit of a pitch to it. So, I'm not opposed to.
I don't want to see us say, I want to get, I know what you're saying about.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to saying that people couldn't have a flat roof. I think, I think if we allow a top plate height, it limits the look of the apartments on the right, is what it does. And you could still have that, I think the house on El Camino Media that I'm thinking of, would still be able to meet the current criteria if we talk about the height, and still have that design. I love the Contemporary, it's one of my favorite houses, but I think this is what we're getting of, just three-story boxes is what I'm afraid we're going to end up with.
I don't think our city approves those kinds of things anymore.
Well, we have one, what is that, is that, what's right across from the market?
Market?
The little market down here in the village on that, that's not San Jose, is that Stockton? What is that?
See, I actually like that little three-story house in there. I think that's great, and I think it's.
It fits, it fits that little hole.
It fits in, it fits in that little spot.
From the plate height approach, is it, it won't work in the floodplain.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
And the new little house that's being built, right at the end of Riverview Avenue, right before, I like that house, and they've gotten, you know, basically three stories in there, and the twenty-seven foot, and it, I mean, it looks great. So, I don't think I want to go with the plate height either.
That was one of the questions I was going to ask, because we had that lengthy discussion about how you measure the height, and I don't see that discussion reflected in anything. Does it, does it belong in the height provisions, or does it belong in the neighborhood provisions? But I think we should let council know that we have a recommendation, whatever that recommendation is, for how you measure it.
But I, I mean, I, to Ed's point about, you know, twenty-five feet versus twenty-seven feet, I'm not certain that, you know, it's that big of a deal to go to twenty-seven feet, you know, maybe we should go to twenty-six and see if that sort of solves the, solves the problem, but.
Well, what does the rest of the commission think about the option that says that, you know, the larger lot sizes?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the larger lot size. Maybe if we have lots larger, and we came up with some number, lots sixty feet wide and larger is going to be the definition for twenty-seven feet?
For twenty, I think it was at seven, at the last meeting, it was a lot size, and I believe it was seven thousand.
Can you go back a couple of slides? Because you had a diagram of lots that are forty feet wide, lots that are sixty feet wide, and my question is, are we still going to allow the applicant to position the house where, you know, with a four-foot setback? Doesn't make any difference how wide the lot is. If the house is still, you know, at the, at the, at the least allowable setback, there'll be plenty of open space on one side, but one neighbor will be. So, in other words, if that eighty-foot, you're showing a larger side yard setback there. Are you saying there would be a larger side yard setback required?
There would be, yep.
Because it's ten percent of the total lot.
Width, the width of the.
Right. Yeah, okay.
So if it's an eighty-foot lot, it's eight feet, if it's a forty-foot lot, it's, but four is.
Is four the minimum, or is it three?
I think three is the minimum, and seven's the maximum.
Yeah. I think this gets everybody in a, gets everybody to a comfortable spot. I think, I think this is one of the ways we go about it. Now, I noticed you dropped the historic, you said we dropped the historic part of that. Now, I, why did we, another thing I don't recall why we did. Why would we have done that? Why, what I'm trying to do is get it to, so that people have as many incentives as possible to maintain and upgrade their historic home, and this could be one of them.
So that, I think the historic elements were mainly roof pitch. It was, because you have these historic homes, they have a steeper roof pitch, and that's, we were allowing the twenty-seven feet because it was steeper roof pitch, not, so she just changed it from historic to, you know, to specify that it's roof pitch and not some other historic.
And so you're saying historic would be included within that, because it has an existing roof pitch?
If there were an existing historic home, it could make, you know, it could remain historic and keep its roof pitch, we wouldn't require it to come lower. And that's something we'll talk about with non-conforming structures.
Right.
But within this, it was, I read it as the twenty-seven foot building height for historic design elements is for an addition. So if there were an addition to, say, a historic home, they could go up, I think 124 Central is a good example of that, there was an addition off the back, they, as long as they comply with their side yard setbacks, or all their setbacks, they were allowed to go up to twenty-seven feet. And that was so that they could have a similar roof pitch to the building in the front.
One of the problems with that particular part of the ordinance is the, is the term, is that phrase, you know, historic design elements, you know, that, that whole thing left a big loophole that could be interpreted any way, and of course, applicants, you know, I would too, want to interpret it the most effective way for themselves. It was not the intent, the original intent, so I'm hoping that goes away.
So, so you could clarify that within the options to allow up to twenty-seven feet for a roof that mimics the, you know, for an addition to a historic structure, so that the roof pitch of the new addition complements the historic, existing historic.
I think it was being used when there wasn't an existing twenty-seven foot, so, I think that would help.
So I think if we go to option four, sort of the hybrid option, and go through that, it makes it a lot clearer for me. So what we're saying is that, you know, the existing code, the height's going to be twenty-five feet, and that we took out the, I'm looking at number four, the hybrid one?
Yes. Do you want me to go back to the, all of the options?
Didn't you have one that's pretty much, you know, options four?
Yeah, sort of summary.
In summary? The hybrid option?
Sorry.
I mean, the hybrid option was working for me.
Sorry.
That one?
That one?
Okay. So this is the hybrid option. So, it seems to me that we're saying that it's twenty-five feet with the following exceptions, those options that we talked about. And those all work for me, you know, lots that are sixty feet are wider, lots that are greater than seven thousand square feet, you know, roof pitch is greater than five twelve, and, you know, on, I personally wouldn't include the twenty-seven feet for lots with steep slopes, because like you said, they absolutely can come in and get a variance. And looking at those lots that you showed us, I mean, even the twenty-seven feet's not going to work for them, they're going to have to go more than that, because those lots are so steep. So, I would leave that one out, but the, the other two work for me.
So that the twenty-seven with the roof pitch greater than five twelve, even in a forty-foot lot? I thought we were thinking that.
That was an alternative.
It would go with twenty-seven.
I think that, that needs to be taken out.
Right.
Well, that was for the historic buildings, and that was an alternative to having an exception for historic buildings. I like the idea of having the exception read more that the historic building can be improved consistent with the.
Existing roof line.
Yeah.
Right, and leave out the five twelve.
So we, so, okay.
Yeah, that's kind of arbitrary number.
And as I say, I don't really care if you leave the twenty-seven feet in on lots with steep slopes, I just feel it's sort of meaningless.
Yeah, I do too. And I really like the non-conforming garages. I'm hoping to be able to get rid of the word "non-conforming" in our ordinances, there's no way you can.
I'd actually like to see that the, not only for existing non-conforming garages, but I'd like to see us allow exceptions for garages. Because having a garage, if it's got, you know, it's a single-story garage with a well-sloped roof, and it's on the back end of an existing garage, it seems to me that it's a good thing for everybody. It gives you more parking and it doesn't really.
But this isn't talking about roofs on garages, this is talking about the existing non-conforming garages that people have right now. This is not building a new one.
Exactly my point. I'm, I'm saying that I'd like to see it so you could build a new one. That a new, a new back end of a garage doesn't have to necessarily be eight feet off the back fence, it can be four feet off the back fence, if it's a single-story garage addition. I think in a lot of cases, it would give people that currently have their houses set way far forward, it would give them an alternative for taking a garage out the back of the house and getting a two-car tandem garage on their property, using space that otherwise is behind a garage and they're not necessarily going to use it. Are you with me?
Yeah.
I think it's a good, I think it would be a good thing to allow people to do that. And the gentleman who was here the other night, I think it would have been a good alternative for him to be able to extend his existing garage without picking the whole house up and moving it.
Well, he had house behind his existing garage, so he would have just used the space that was his house, he wouldn't have had to have.
It would have given him options in design that would have potentially enabled him to.
Why isn't this part of our non-conforming discussion?
It can be, as well.
You can do it all at once.
Well, but Linda, excuse me, Chairwoman Smith is suggesting that the rear yard here, the eight feet, be decreased to, you mentioned four feet, and I think she's also suggesting that there be a height limit introduced for secondary structures within the rear yard for garages. So, it would be appropriate to have this discussion now, if it's going to change the development standards for accessory structures.
Yeah, and it could even be simpler than that, where you're recommending adding an exception for existing non-conforming garages. I would just say add an exception for garages located within setbacks. Period.
And therefore, new development could come in and be closer to the rear property line, as long as it's within a certain height limit as well.
And, yeah, you need to set the height limit, so it's not a, they're not putting a room back there and calling it a garage, that it's actually a garage. But I think it's a, it's a design option for helping with our parking problem that people should be able to take advantage of.
That's assuming that people put cars in garages.
Yeah.
How many people put cars in garages, really? It's just more storage, I think it would be.
I don't know, I put cars in garages.
Or housing.
I've seen it used very creatively back when you could have a ten-by-twelve accessory structure, that was less than eight feet, you know, high. I've seen it accommodate a tandem garage.
So, I could live with a shorter, people, I mean, basically what you're saying is that, you know, if you have a lot, you're going to have a long driveway going back to a garage. And we have a number of those right now, in sort of the Riverview Terrace neighborhood. And I could live with a, you know, new structure being built with that kind of garage, if, you know, we have something about, you know, the driveway length, so that you have, you know, parking in that longer driveway, because, I mean, I agree with Gail, I mean, I bet I could go through Riverview Terrace, and there wouldn't be enough garages, that rear garages that people are parking cars in, that I could count them on one hand. I mean, that just, it doesn't happen. But it does.
So you're saying that they're, we are assuming that they're meeting most of their parking requirement in the driveway and the existing garage, and then we grant them a second tandem part of their garage in back. The only way we would be able to work that, so we wouldn't work, we would not use that as part, as their parking requirement, then, are you saying? We would not, we would not allow them to count that as their parking requirement? They could use it as space, but they could.
Well, there are a couple of things that I think fit into it. For, for a lot of neighborhoods, doesn't, isn't there, you can't put a driveway up next to your property line. Isn't there some setback that you have to have for landscaping?
Two feet.
Two feet. And the current driveways in Riverview Terrace don't have that setback. Ninety percent of them, my reck. Ninety percent of them, my recollection is, are on the property line.
Or deep on hill.
So by the time you have to set it back for a forty-foot wide lot, suddenly that house is getting very, very narrow. But it, it does give-
I just think that we have to be able to address the parking. And garages count in the far, correct?
Yes.
So if somebody's not going to park their garage, park their car in the garage, then being able to set the garage farther back is helpful with parking in that it makes a longer driveway. If they are going to use their garage as parking cars, and those people who use their garages have expensive cars which make it, makes sense for them to use them, then perhaps they'll decide to do a tandem two-car garage, which again increases the parking.
Well, it seems like if we're going to let people keep their non-conforming garages, which are built on the side property line and the rear property line and rebuild those, then, and we're saying that's okay, then it probably does make some sense to let people do new development where you have a garage in the back as long as, you know, we have something about height and it, four feet away, and it will end up being two feet from the side property line because the new ones would have to meet that requirement in the code. It would, it would probably work.
I think it would be interesting to run it past the council during this and see, you know, more people tend to come to council meetings as well when these things are reviewed, and so it'll get it a little bit more airing at that point.
So I could go along with it in-
I would use the same height restrictions as you do for accessory structures. So I think that can't be more than eighteen, which-
Fifteen feet.
Is it eighteen?
Well, a garage is going to be eight feet.
You see, I think, isn't it?
It's got, I think a garage needs to be a little taller than eight feet, doesn't it? I mean, if you're going to put a pitched roof on the garage, then it seems to me that you want it to be a little taller than eight feet, or you're just going to have flat-roof garages, which nobody likes flat roofs.
No, I, I'm not against flat roofs. I just see issues.
Oh, and the one that I saw that was so uniquely done, the pitch was, so the fence, the back fence was here and the pitch went this way. So it really, even though it was closer to the fence, it did not intrude in any way on that house that was behind it. So when I say eight feet, I'm talking about sloping it that way. The front end of a car and, you know, a work area is short.
I'm all about garages. If you can build a garage, I'm on board with that.
Okay.
I think, you know, especially, you look in some of those areas-
How about twelve feet?
I have clarification for you in the existing code, and I think it actually has a wall plate, top of wall plate and a total height. So the width of a detached garage or carport in the rear yard is limited to twenty-one feet. The height is limited to fifteen, nine feet to the top of the wall plate. However, the planning commission may approve an exception to allow additional height if necessary to match the architectural style of the existing primary structure.
I like that.
That works for me. Okay. So I'm going to re-summarize what I just heard on this slide. We'll maintain the front yard setback of forty feet. We'll maintain the height limit as it is in the code today. Side yard standards will remain the same. They'll, we'll keep the two-foot landscaping buffer along the driveway leading to a rear garage. The setback from the primary structure will remain at three feet. And the, the rear yard requirement will be decreased to four feet.
And the height's fifteen.
And the height's fifteen.
With the wall plate at nine, exactly what it says in there.
So here, so this person comes in and they want to redo their garage. It's an old garage. It's listing. It's right on both of the property lines. They don't have any room to bring it in two feet. Are we going to allow, you were going to allow them to rebuild it but not expand it?
Right. That's the exception for existing non-conforming.
Okay, great.
The other one is for new garages being built, right?
And we can discuss that more when we get to non-conforming.
And if this existing one wanted, they wanted to add any space, they would have to really go with the two-foot and they would have to conform to the existing code.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
So let's, now we could, under the height exception, removing the five-twelve pitch, but better defining the historic. The twenty-seven foot on lots greater than seven thousand square feet, there were quite a few lots at the six thousand square foot threshold that are in Cliffwood Heights and in other neighborhoods is to seven thousand. Do you want to look at that map again before we set a threshold?
What's the average square footage of the, of all of the white lots that you, you know, is there, do we have an average square footage of those lots that don't fall into the six, seven, eight, nine, and ten category?
I don't know it off of-
Okay, that's all right.
Typically, lot-
I could live with six thousand square feet. That's a pretty big lot. I could live with six thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then twenty-seven feet on lots with widths that are greater than sixty feet wide, and then removing the steep slope because that will be a variance.
Just a question. Camino Medio is the other steep slope, but it's kind of the steep slope in the, in the other direction. Do those houses all adhere to the twenty-seven or twenty-five?
I'm, I think it's twenty-seven.
And they're considered Central Village, so they would still be into that as well?
And there are some areas on Riverview Drive that are steeper than others, and they're sort of in the center of Riverview Drive, maybe where Sunset comes in around there. I've been into those homes, and some of them are three stories as well. They go down because they're, that's a pretty steep slope there. So-
Do you feel strongly that we need to remove that one?
I just feel that, you know, it doesn't, I don't feel, you don't have to take it out. I just don't think it really does anything because I think most of the lots I know of that are going to be that steep, they're going to need a variance anyway because twenty-seven feet wouldn't do it, but-
I think it's better to stay away from variances as a matter of policy if we can because there's-
Okay, then leave it in. It's fine with me. I don't want to.
Okay.
And then the exception for the thirty feet, thirty feet wide lots.
Yeah, that works well. I think that's a good one.
One thing we can do to address that too is, we're going to have to define what a steep slope is then, and we can make that relatively steep twenty-five percent or something so that it's really the extraordinarily steep lots and not something with a gentle slope that gets an exception.
Okay, thank you. The next discussion is on calculations for the non-conforming structural alterations. In your packet last week, Commissioner Newman pointed out that we had two examples within that packet of non-conforming structural alterations and how we calculate that. So I can run through this if folks have questions on how it's calculated currently, but it's based on eighty percent of the total existing value. So we, the building official, when a plan comes in, we'll, we hand him the plans and he goes through and does the calculations based on what's existing, what's new construction, and then what portion of the building will be remodeled. And if it's over the eighty percent, they're required to bring it into compliance. And oftentimes, we've seen a trend of, with the historic building, we don't necessarily want the non-conforming structure to go away, so therefore they're asking for a variance to the non-conforming valuation. So, and I just want to specify that in this conversation, we're talking about the structure, not the use when we're looking at this. So if it doesn't comply with height setbacks, parking, that's-
If they are also.
And floor area ratio, yep.
Quick question. The current fair market value, is that a calculation of square foot at the current market value? Where does that number come from?
So it's an estimate. So if you have a home that was custom-built and would sell for five hundred dollars a square foot versus a home that was built as affordably as possible at, say, a hundred and forty a square foot, they're both calculated the exact same. It's two hundred dollars per square foot for how we evaluate it, so.
Doesn't that number come out of the building code?
It comes out of the building code, yep.
It's not the tax, the taxable.
It's a, it's a, it's a number that goes in the building code, and they do it by area, and the number varies depending on whether you live in this area.
Time out, time out. That's for new construction. So this has been, in my experience, inconsistently applied by different building officials over time in various ways, which is one of the problems, I think, that we need to address in the new code. What the current building official is doing is what I would call replacement cost of the existing structure. So you have an eight-hundred-square-foot house that's just about to fall down and is non-conforming. And it's virtually worthless as a structure, but it gets two hundred dollars a square-foot valuation.
Right.
Even though it, you know, it's depreciated to almost zero. And that's the current method that's been used in the last, at least this series of my time on the planning commission, but wasn't before. So the one point I want to make is that we, we need to come up with a code that we're sure will be done consistently into the future, one way or another. But I have other questions when we get to that.
Well, for me, I would like to completely get rid of the whole valuation thing because what I see happen over and over is someone comes in for a remodel, they get to keep their existing setbacks, and then, once they get into the construction of the house, not by their fault, something else comes up, and so then the whole thing gets torn down. And the whole valuation thing is going out the window. If we come up with a system that, you know, we simply talk about square footage, then it's clear that, you know, if the whole thing comes down, you know, where there's more square footage in there, you don't get into this argument about value and number. And, you know, I point out this example all the time. There are two new houses that got built about two years ago on Riverview Drive.
Exactly.
And one, they both got completely torn down, except one of them came in as a remodel. So they still have a short driveway and this huge, big, new two-story house. And the one that came in as a new house, you know, has the twenty-foot driveway that can be parked in. So I just want to get rid of valuation and go to some sort of square footage formula.
I agree with you.
I think it's fair. I think it's clear to the applicants. I think everybody understands it better.
When I first came to Capitola, among builders, the notion was if you left any wood in the air-
Right.
You could keep all the-
Everything.
Yeah, you could keep, that's all you had to do is keep one wall.
Yeah. And they would leave that one wall up while they did all the construction in front, and then knock that one wall down and put a new wall back there.
You know, and trying to think about just kind of going the same place you were is what would be a good system. I, you know, I kind of took it back one level and said, what are the goals here? I mean, we've got a town that developed over periods of time with different rules, so now we come along and we got a bright new city council that enacts some new rules. What, to what extent do we want to impose those ever on the people who have had houses in the past if they want to? I mean, one rule is simply that you can rebuild, but just not add regardless. On, on, not on use, because that's a different discussion. But on setbacks and FAR and those kinds of things. If you have an existing house, you met the rules when it was built, then you can continue to have it.
Yeah.
I, I looked at the square footage version also, and I think they both have some pros and cons. But, you know, you look in Capitola, some of the homes, my home, for example, where we built it, and I know a lot of the other homes have no foundation. So you really, unless you're going to jack up a bunch of termite-infested wood to put a foundation under it, you really are left with tearing the whole thing down. That's really what it comes down to. And so I think it's more fair, it puts people more in the same park by doing it by the, either saying rebuild as is or using a square footage as a model instead of the eighty percent value. That, to me, I got caught in that whole thing, so I understand it very clearly.
This is all really good discussion, but point of order, I think we slipped through issue one and into sixteen without opening it to the public. So at this point, I'd like to open to the public and ask if there's anyone here that would like to discuss the issue of height and/or this issue of non-conforming structures. I might like to put off the non-conforming uses for a minute until we get through this one, but if there's anyone here who would like to speak on either of those items, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll continue with the discussion.
Some wise minds out there, I know. I know you have some wisdom for us. No? Okay.
Eyes averted.
Yeah.
I completely agree with what you guys have said about existing homes. I think when, when people move into Capitola and they, they buy, they buy a home that's a certain size, their expectation and what they're really paying for is that house. And if by some disaster, flood, fire, or other disaster, they lose that home, then they're allowed to build it back in its same size. And it seems to me that we, I mean, that, that's a minimum good thing. But we lose out when people come in and they have, they could really give us a better design. They could give us a better house if they were allowed to tear it down and build something new. But they're not willing to give up the thirty percent in some cases, you know, square footage that they'd have to give up to meet all of the current setbacks. And I haven't really heard that we hate what we have. I've only heard that we don't want to keep building great big houses, and we've, we've had some that got built that were, you know, bigger than we want. We want to keep the cottage to smaller scale. So letting people rebuild what they already have seems to me to be a good thing, and it makes everything a lot easier.
And so it would be for more than just disasters. It would also be for prior neglect or just a desire to build a new house.
Just a desire.
But if they want to go up in any type of square footage at all, they're going to have to meet the other standards. Is that what we're saying? So if they want to keep the exact square footage that they've got now, they can keep their set, their non-conform, whatever non-conforming elements they've got.
Any additions, any additions have to conform to the current rules.
So option three is to remove a valuation cap for structural alterations to non-conforming structures. And in this, you would state that the existing non-conformities can exist and can be repaired. They cannot be, the non-conformity cannot be increased. But you could have an addition, and once you get into an addition, if it's greater than ten percent, the parking has to come into compliance. The, the new addition has to meet your height requirements, your setback requirements, your floor area ratio. So there is, I've actually worked with a code prior that had, that applied option three, and as a planner, it's a lot more easy to operate under because as people come in, you realize that sometimes someone's setbacks doesn't, they don't meet setbacks, they don't meet height. But in the new addition area, they're in compliance, and you don't run into that issue all the time of saying, oh, you know, under an old, your house is built under an old code and it doesn't quite fit anymore. But it's not, it'd be one thing if we were hearing that there is a pattern in town that you absolutely want to get rid of, that there are homes that are having an impact. But if you don't, can't identify what it is that you want removed, option three sounds like a good alternative.
I think the things that we, I think the things that we identified several years ago that got built too large several, several years before that, are going to have a lifespan far beyond any of us being here, and somebody else can, you know, life will have changed at that point. And let them figure those out.
So, I mean, I'll talk about, I have, I live in a house, and the houses next door to me were built on the property line. And so, and so the only thing, we just have three feet between their house and our- And so, and so the only thing, we just had three feet between their house and our house, which became, I mean, it was dark, it was always damp, it was always, so they tore those houses down. And I wouldn't like to see them rebuild the identical house that they had back on the property line again, because in all honesty, I think them moving their house three feet meeting the setback requirement ended up with a better situation for them and for us. So, you know, I'm hearing what Ed says, if, you know, a house gets destroyed in a flood or something, we want to be quite generous and let them, you know, tear it down. But if you're just going to tear down an old house and build a brand-new house the same size, but leave it right there on the, on the property line...
Wouldn't the building code have protected you in that situation? I think that you can't build on the property line anymore.
Well, you can build on the property line if you do a firewall and have, you know, protected openings with wire glass and those kinds of things. You can still build on a property line, I believe. So, you know, I hear that, you know, if somebody's going to completely tear down their house and build a new house, why wouldn't we want it to fit into the neighborhood a little better?
Wouldn't they still have to come in here for a design review, though? And couldn't we, at that time, and the neighbor could come in and say, you know, I don't want it to be on the property line and so forth? And it doesn't automatically entitle them.
But we're going to have...
I think once your building plans show that you're removing walls and you're getting rid of a home, it has to come into compliance. So you would only allow the existing non-conforming to stay, but at that point, that it's taken down unless, you know, there is a section of code that is very specific about a flood or a natural disaster.
But Ed said he wanted to let them tear it down and build a new house.
And rebuild it.
As long as it stayed the same size without meeting any of the setback requirements. And, you know, I think we want to improve areas and situations as new homes get built. I agree, somebody gets to keep their non-conforming house forever and they can repair it, but there comes a point, if they're going to completely tear it down, that it seems like they should have to conform to what we make everyone else who's building a new house conform to.
Yeah, I think that can be handled by the planning commission in reviewing that application. By saying that they have the right, they can do it, it's not automatically disqualified because it was non-conforming, doesn't mean they, their design is approved by the planning commission.
I mean, one compromise situation could be where you do observe a minimum three-foot setback, that's a standard fire code requirement. You could get an exception to that if you have a fire-rated wall at the exterior, but, you know, that's probably something we wouldn't want to encourage as a matter of practice. So that might be sort of a good middle ground to go with.
If they were going to take it all the way down, I think there should be some consideration for the part, bringing parking into compliance. I mean, if they're going to take it all the way down to give a new design, they should be able to...
We're back to calculating what's a complete remodel and what's, you know, one wall standing problem again.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with it if we go to, you know, sort of a square footage system. If somebody's going to take down more than 80% of the house and build a new house, and I just picked the 80% number.
So how does that 80% get calculated?
Square footage. If they're going to remodel more than 80% of their house.
Square footage of their house.
Square footage of the house, then it's time to, you know, bring it into conformance.
But how do you calculate, let's say you have a house and it's got a bunch of walls and you're going to take out a bunch of walls and open up the floor plan, how do you calculate how much of that square footage you just touched? I mean, when we remodeled our house, we took it, we took it basically down to the framing, took out walls, put in support walls, opened up the floor plan, and had to come in for variances for the footprint and the, we didn't change the exterior structure, the framing stayed exactly as it was, but the interior completely changed. And we had to get a bunch of variances just to keep the house that was there.
The size, because if you were to go build that much of a house that, the day that you did it, your house was existing too big.
It was existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
And now it's even more non-conforming than it was then.
So I have good news and I have bad news. The good news is that this is something that every community struggles with, and so there are a lot of examples to follow. The bad news is that it's really hard to deal with this issue, no matter how you approach it. And the vast majority of communities have moved from a valuation approach to calculating the demolition of an existing structure to one that's based on floor area. And the best examples, from my opinion, are ones that take into consideration sort of the percentage of removal of both your horizontal and your vertical surfaces, looking at your exterior walls and looking at your roof and your floor as well. And it's still, it's still a big problem that you're going to have an applicant who's going to say that they're going to demolish 45% of their horizontal and their vertical surfaces. They get out there, they find all the dry rot, and they end up demolishing 55, and then it puts everybody in a really difficult situation. But, so, it's hard, but I think it's preferable to the valuation approach, which I think has worse problems. And so, you know, I think that, you know, the, the other, sort of, another option, which is, I think, a more radical approach that was perhaps suggested by Commissioner Newman, which is to say that if you have an existing structure that's non-conforming and you demolish it, you're entitled to recreate it or replace it, following the same sort of standards that existed with the existing structure. And, and, you know, I think that if you were to go that route, one thing that you can consider is some additional findings or maybe an additional permit. Some communities have what's called a non-conformity permit, so that if somebody wanted to do that, there would be certain findings that would need to be made to make sure that the existing situation wasn't creating, you know, a hardship that needed to be resolved at that time.
I like that.
I like that.
So that's three with a little twist to it.
Yeah, I can imagine that the findings would relate to, you know, have an adequate separation between adjacent neighbors so they can get air and light into their home. They don't, you know, they have some parking, you know, maybe it's not meeting the current standard, but that it's not completely devoid of off-street parking, maybe it does comply. You know, there's flexibility in how we want to go there, but...
It's, I mean, it seems like if what we're creating is a situation where we are not going to get anything corrected, so it works better in the community. And I go back to my two houses on Riverview, which were basically torn down. One house, because it meets our requirements, which we said was a 20-foot driveway, can park two cars on, off the street in their driveway, and I don't know what they do with their garage. The other house, which kept its old setback requirements, still has a short driveway, so you can't park cars in front of the garage without them covering the sidewalk, which is what these people do most of the time. And if we think it's important to have, for example, a 20-foot driveway to improve the parking situation in Riverview Terrace, we're now going to say, no, you never have to improve your parking situation, you can just tear it down and build a new house and it can be, you know, have all the same old, non-conforming setbacks that, you know, we're trying to get rid of.
It seems like in those cases, though, they add its square footage or they change the dimensions of the house, is that all right?
So, I actually looked that one up because I was very curious as to how that got built and the way in which it did. And they actually did not increase their square footage. So it was a, it was one of those scenarios where it was rebuilt, but it didn't, there wasn't a 10% increase that required, triggered the parking, so...
But they ended up tearing down the whole house because of, you know...
I see some advantages in a, you know, a community like Capitola where it's older to try to encourage to keep the same cottage, because that's what they encourage. They encourage is clean that up, keeping the same cottage-style feel without putting, trying to even, so if they, the other approach to that would be, maybe they get the setbacks, but they build a much larger house and change the character of the community. So I think by this, to me, it seems like it lends itself to people maybe rebuilding their current structure and upgrading it, but keeping that same feel of the character of the neighborhood.
So a word on parking, because, I mean, I think the, what I'm hearing about parking here seems to be going counter to the momentum that has occurred over years now, which is basically to de-emphasize the role of the automobile and parking and planning. And in fact, Capitola reduced its parking requirements. When I built my house, it was three, or a two, a small house, and then it went down to two. And so that's the direction that things are going. Now, I realize that, you know, there's a parking issue, but it has a lot to do with tourism in our community and not residences. So I'm not sure that we want to reverse that trend in the things we're doing here.
No, I'm not asking to reverse that trend, I'm simply saying that, you know, I think, for example, in Riverview Terrace, it would be nice if we had some more houses that provided parking, because we have a real parking problem on the street right now. And, you know, sometimes it gets ugly up there. So if we're going to have someone who's completely going to tear down their home, it seems like that's the time to address what is a parking issue in that neighborhood. And what I'm hearing you say is that, no, they don't need to address the parking issue, they just get to, you know, go back to the way it was. And I think we want to see things improved. Why do we make people who build the new house provide parking? I mean, if we feel that way, we should just not do any parking.
But not as much as we used to require.
Right.
Can we let, allow somebody to tear down their existing cottage, build the same cottage, and still make them have to provide parking? I mean, we can get both. Why do we have to have one or the other? You know?
Because oftentimes, unless they redesign it, you're not going to, you're not, there's not going to be room for parking.
So that's considering that it's set forward in the lot, but if it's set, you know, over to one side and it's the side yard that's the problem. Of course, if we're going to now allow, make them have three feet, there's, again, not room. But I'm really with TJ. I mean, anything, any way we can incentivize people to rebuild the size or just a little larger that they've got now, that's the direction I think we want to go in. We're not going to get there 100%, but it's the direction we want to go in.
Yeah, I disagree, but I'm probably in a minority here.
Well, I'm certainly on board with the encouraging the park, because the parking is a situation, but it has been and probably always will be a situation. And I think it's going to be a minority of people, they're going to go and rebuild the same type square, I mean, you, it seems like you have an exception with that. So in the example that we're using next door on Riverview, that one would go through today, would meet all of our current requirements today that we're talking about? Because they add the lesson.
No.
No, they need up several variances.
Okay, so it wouldn't...
But they were, they were remodeling and then they got into it and it wound up being a tear it down and rebuild it, is what I'm hearing.
They didn't increase...
The one further down.
Yeah. They didn't increase their square footage, so they weren't required to meet the parking standard.
Meet the parking standard.
Right. But that's what we're talking about doing now, right? So we're not, we're talking about the same thing. So an example that we're using, that would get through today and under the model that we're talking about, the same thing could happen.
Yes.
So you could set up the, the non-conforming to, to allow for a non-conforming structure that does not meet setback or height requirements, may continue as an existing non, a valid non-conforming structure, but you could specify that a non-conforming structure that does not comply with parking along, and you could specify certain parts of town if you'd like, you know, that in parking town. But you, you could get more specific about the parking and create...
So it would seem to me that to, you know, accommodate what Gail wants, what you're talking about, you know, if you start talking about the small cottages and that kind of thing, you're talking about fairly small structures. So, you know, if you're saying that a structure's like 1,000 square feet, which a lot of the smaller cottages are even smaller than that, you're saying, why can't you just say if it's historic that you can tear it down and rebuild it? Why do, why are you going to let people tear down anything and rebuild it?
And then, what, what is historic in Capitola at this point? I mean, is it, you know, that, we have to, we have to grapple with that as well.
We have to grapple with that issue.
Yeah.
But that was to my point of, you get somebody who buys a property in Capitola, and maybe they live in it for years and maybe not, but they want to improve on the design of that structure. And they're limited because if they improve on that design to a certain square footage or value or however you want to measure it, if they, if they do that, then they have to bring it all into conformance, and in some cases, that means it's going to be 30% smaller than it was. And they, they don't do it, because they don't want to give up the 30% square footage. So we lose because they just keep maintaining, hopefully, this old, ugly structure because they can't really change it without giving up. I mean, they could be completely in compliance on parking and height and everything else and want to give a better design to the streetscape, and they can't do it.
Right. Well, clearly you guys want to go with it, so we should stop.
I think we've covered this one, let's let the city council finish it.
I think there's so many different variables, so many different ways people want to go about it, that it's not going to work for certain people, no matter what way we do it.
Okay.
Would that, why don't you review what we just did?
Do you want to?
Yes, will you? Let's see, what did we just say?
Let's, let's...
Remodified, by Ben put it.
I'll let Ben recap.
Go, Ben.
So, I think the major change to what you have today is that if you have a legal non-conforming structure and an applicant wishes to demolish that structure or replace it with a new structure, that they, they can do so, and those non-conformities will continue to apply to the new structure. But that there needs to be some protection and some process by which the city can ensure that that non-conforming situation previously was not sort of an undue burden on neighboring properties. And that might be through additional findings or through a non-conformity permit or some similar type process.
And parking or the shorter driveway could be one of those, right?
And so I think that if you take that approach, which Susan, Commissioner Westman doesn't agree with, that sort of the whole, the whole problem of defining exactly when you've demolished too much becomes sort of a non-issue as far as I can think right now.
Anybody can do anything with a non-conforming structure now, they don't have to bring it into any kind of conformance if they're not making it bigger.
Subject to findings, if it isn't oppressive in some way. You take the game out of it, that's what I, one of the things I...
With some sort of finding to the effect that, that the structure is not an area that's recognized as being parking-impacted, help kind of reach consensus on this? So the areas like Riverview, maybe areas of Jewel Box that get a lot of parking.
It just parks out whole areas.
That's areas that need...
Yeah, I'm just looking for middle ground.
Parking and, and setback.
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with having a honest disagreement on an issue and letting the city council go with it.
And in review of the findings, if we're looking for no negative impacts to adjacent properties or the public, if parking is an issue, that can come up at that time and be discussed, so, okay. Thank you.
Can I ask one question before we move on? We were talking about roof height a while ago, and one thing I, I probably should know this, but do we have a code on rooftop decks? And one thing I, I probably should know this, but do we have a code on rooftop decks? Well, the only reason, because if we do all these. Yeah, exactly. And if we're gonna start allowing flat top roofs, maybe we need to put a caveat in there because I, I know there's some issues that I've been hearing about.
I don't believe there's anything in the code. When I've had inquiries, what I generally tell applicants is it's usually frowned upon and it doesn't have a real high chance of success.
So I heard that we had a nineteen eighty, I want to say nineteen eighty-eight moratorium on rooftop decks. You couldn't build a new one, and if you had a flat spot on your roof that did not already have stairs going to it, you could not put stairs going to it. I have one of those houses and that's what I was told.
I know we, we approved a mansard style roof to shield solar roofing. But the solar roofing never got there. Now it's a nice rooftop deck with no chairs and table and everything else. So I, I just don't know. It just seems to me like, um.
Solar barbecue.
And I could see if we're, if we have these twenty-seven foot flat top roofs going around, we're gonna have a lot of. I don't blame them. It's a great view from up there, but, okay, sorry to deter that topic.
That's all right, because, you know, you reminded me that we left the character, the neighborhood character without talking about decks. And I think we need to go back to that at some point. And maybe we can touch on the flat, the roof deck at the same time.
While we're on the subject, would you like to, do you think they should not be allowed by code?
Okay. Well, are we finished with the non-conforming?
We're finished with non-conforming. Well, we're about to go into the multifamily with some.
So I would like to go back to the neighborhood character and talk about the fact that, you know, when I was first on the planning commission, then on the city council, and back on the planning commission, for years, decks were not allowed, certainly on side yards, and not on backyards in most neighborhoods because they were viewed as being intrusive with the neighbors. And so, but we've gotten away from that and we don't really have anything in our code about it. So we need to have some discussions about, you know, I don't think we're talking about front yard decks or anything. I think anything in the front yard, we all agree, is a good neighborhood thing. And I'm, I'm open to talking about, you know, I, I think we should talk about what happens in backyards and side yards in different areas.
Especially with second floors, second story decks?
Second story, yeah. First story, I don't think is a problem because it doesn't make any difference. If it's a deck or it's a walkway or it's your yard, you're gonna be walking out there anyway. And you're not gonna be looking into somebody's, you know, we're really talking about second stories. So I, I feel like in, in a lot of our neighborhoods, second stories are, uh, second story decks, regardless of their size, can be very intrusive and be very, be one more thing that adds to that feeling of I'm, I'm closed in here and I, you know, there's just too many people near me kind of feeling that we get in Capitola sometimes. I don't know. What does the rest of the commission feel about?
Put rooftop decks in, bred in there with it.
Yeah.
Just call them above-ground decks.
Above-ground decks. Well, then something.
So, so currently on the second story, if it were on the back of the home or the side of the home, it would count towards your floor area ratio under?
It's not a floor area ratio issue for me. It's a privacy issue. And the, you know, again, I think we could go with something if you have a six thousand square foot lot or bigger than they could be considered. But in areas like, um, you know, most of Riverview Terrace, a lot of the Jewel Box, a lot of, there's, anytime you put a deck on the side, second story deck on the side or the rear of the house, they're absolutely gonna be looking in somebody's yard, no matter, I mean, not even the yard right adjacent to them. They'll look into, you know, yards going down. So I could be comfortable with not allowing second floor decks on the side or rear on lots that are smaller than six thousand square feet.
A common approach to deal with this is to require some sort of permit for a second store floor deck. It could be an administrative design review or a minor use permit, which would sort of notice immediate neighbors. It doesn't have to be a sort of lengthy, expensive process before the planning commission, but it's a way to maybe allow this in cases where it's not creating a privacy impact on neighbors. But make sure that if it would create that impact, that it would be screened out.
You know, it reminded me, we, we had an application that came to the planning commission last week. And I had three different people come to my house who lived in the neighborhood to express their objections to the, uh, application before us. And on all three of them, I said, well, you know, you should send an email or you should come to the meeting. And they all went, oh, no, I can't, I can't do that because I don't want to upset my neighbors. And so I think we have to be careful about not making rules that, you know, rely on what the existing neighbors say because they often don't want to create a controversy. And, um, this is not gonna come out right, but personally, I don't really care what the existing neighbors say because ultimately they're going to be new neighbors and our goal is to try and build neighborhoods that are going to function well over a long period of time. So, um.
I, I find it difficult sometimes just to say no to, because to me, it takes away a little opportunity for design and, and comfort of, of some homes. And it may, there's gotta be some restriction, I understand, but it's not much different than have a window that looks, a second story window that looks into me. I mean, you could have a nice big window and you get the same view as you get from the deck, so how do you?
It's not just that, though. It's, it's noise, it's, you know, and that, and I think that we could actually work with, with square footage, deck square footage, and that might solve it. Like if, if we're talking about six thousand square foot lots, you know, you get a certain square footage on the back as opposed to a two, a five thousand, four thousand square foot lot, it's gotta be smaller because it's closer to your neighbor. So I, I would say maybe we can look at a, a sliding scale of, of deck sizes. But also I think we have to say that if a current neighbor has a problem with a deck, it's, it's a non-starter. I mean, if somebody comes up in, in this community and says, you just, I just really don't feel comfortable with that deck right there, I don't know how any of us could stand, sit here and say, well, we're gonna allow it anyway, you know? I think if there's a, if there's a challenge to a second story deck, we wouldn't be approving it anyway.
Well, we had a case, um, up on Depot Hill on Escalone, I think, where they had a, a second story deck and the tenants from next door did come in and complain. And the, the compromise that got approved was a deck with screening on it so that it was no longer a privacy issue for the, the adjacent. But, but they got, you know, a deck that they can go out and.
But then you get mathing. Then you get, it's basically like a wall.
Well, really, in this one, I think it turned out to just be a front-facing deck, but it was open, it was on the corner. So at one point it was open to the side, so they just. My, my first house that got approved, if we end up building, was a two-story with a deck with like a veranda. But the shape was a, it was kind of a U shape with a garage, so really it faced towards a garage with an open area in between. And so I would hate to, even though I never built a house, it, um, it, it wouldn't, it'd be a privacy issue because really I'd be looking at a little courtyard. And it would be a side-facing, uh, deck, so I don't know how you get away from those type of issues.
We, I, I know a situation, you know, where Tori's house is, there's a deck next door to her and we complained about that, so they put up a wall on the side of the deck. But they go out on their deck, they have coffee in the morning, they talk, they do all of this. It, it, it doesn't, it's the noise problem as well as sort of the privacy. And so it seems to me that, I hear that you don't want to just say, no, you can't have a deck. But, um, I think we could come up with something where there could be some, you know, minimum lot size because if you're in a, you know, pretty congested area, the decks are most likely going to be a problem on the side and the rear, um, which would, you know, if you went with your six thousand square foot lot or, you know.
Well, it's interesting, because one of the notes I saw about, um, I think it was decks, it said if it was facing the rail corridor, it was an exempt, like we talked about, open space. So I just happen to live on the rail cor, and, I mean, what would I look at across the street? I mean, on my backyard towards the rail, nothing. There's nothing back there to, to really look at. So I don't know why we would say no if it was at the, there must be specific examples.
Yeah, I didn't know why you said no to the rail corridor either, because that seemed like sort of an obvious one to me. But I don't want to fight about everything.
You mean having, having a second story deck open on the front or open?
Minimum distance.
So I have some comments, but there was, I, I don't know if you want to reopen the public. We finally got some public participation possible here.
Do we have somebody from the public who would like to speak?
No, I just have, my comment was.
Can you, can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, Jerry Jensen. I live on Bay Avenue. Um, when I brought my original plan in for my house, I was working with Katie, um, and we wanted to put a green roof on it. And, um, there's just, from a process standpoint, the turnaround time of getting to a green roof, because there wasn't any procedural, uh, you know, process put in place, we stepped back from it. But I also think our green roof was gonna count in to our flare, uh, our floor area square footage. And I think as, you know, things are going green and we, you know, we're looking at taking our house to different levels of, you know, being efficient and stuff like that, I don't know if this is the time now to look at that or, you know, for future, you know, people building green roofs and stuff like that. It was, I think Katie's standpoint, if I don't want to put words in her mouth, was kind of viewed as a deck. But I mean, we were looking at it as a green roof, you know, from helping offset energy, you know, loss and stuff like that. So I don't know, you know, if this is not the process for this today, but if maybe if a system put up that, that could be explored in the future and what is the city gonna take stances on? Green roofs, are they decks, you know, and then their second floor decks, oh, we don't allow second floor decks. But if you don't allow a second floor green roof, then the city's kind of taking a stance and they don't want people to build green. So just a, from a building standpoint and homeowner.
That's good input. Thank you for the input.
Yeah.
Is the, is the green roof considered a deck and handled this way or is it in the?
In that situation, it, um, there's a mansard roof, so it was habitable space. So you could go up there, there were, you know, the, the mansard roof came up to, I want to say, three and a half feet. So, and there was a staircase leading up to it, so under that, because it was so accessible. If it were a, a living roof, a green roof, say on a flat roof that didn't have access and didn't have the safety precautions around the edges of the building, we wouldn't have counted it towards the floor area ratio.
There were green roofs on that project on Wharf Road. It was their carport roofs, but for a number of years, they grew grass on those roofs. They eventually got away from doing that because they felt they had so much of a maintenance problem. The homeowners association in that condo project came and asked for them to be removed. But I don't think, you know, we would prohibit someone from doing something like that. But if it was gonna be a deck where people were going to be going up and using it as a garden, then it does seem to me it becomes a deck.
Well, it is a garden. You have to have stairs going up to it in order to maintain it. So that's why they're saying it's habitable space because there's a fine line where I'm going up, for the first year I go up and I'm just watering and pruning and whatever. And then the next year, well, I bring a chair up because I need to hang out up there. And then the next year, there's a table and a barbecue and five years later, somebody's living up there.
Yeah. That's the way it usually goes in our town.
Back to the, um, back to the deck issue because I'm hearing one side of it and I haven't heard enough about the other side of that issue, which is, I'm conflicted by the deck issue because I can see, it's like one neighbor versus the other neighbor. Because one neighbor wants to really use the outdoors and be able to step outside in the evening. The other neighbor doesn't want their, one neighbor to be within sight. I mean, I kind of like maybe some kind of square footage restriction, so it's not a party area.
So it's not right in, yeah, and it's also not right in your face.
But you still can use your house for, I mean, have some indoor/outdoor living in your house.
Which requires some sort of special permit for it, um, and, you know, put a restriction on size so that it gets flagged. It's not just.
Maybe the size has to do with the.
Side or rear.
You know, maybe they're not allowed when, you know, in, in a certain, like, from two thousand to four thousand square foot lots, they're not allowed at all, possibly on second floors. From four, four, four thousand to five thousand, there's a certain square footage. Five to six thousand, it's a larger square footage, you know, and as the lots get larger. I like going with the square footage of the lot because we've been doing that with other things and I think it keeps it consistent. People understand.
That's a little too restrictive. I mean, the lots in the Jewel Box are thirty-two hundred.
Yeah, all right. Well, then maybe that's a little too, too restrictive. The numbers might not be right. But, um, maybe that mechanism worked for you?
One, one standard to consider would be separation from an, from an adjacent residence, which I think is really kind of the main sort of concern that you have, that you don't want this outdoor deck to be too close due to privacy and noise impacts. And so if you can focus on that variable and tie your standard to that, that might work well.
Because I have a thirty-two hundred square foot lot in the Jewel Box that's on a corner. And so it's, it's set really strange, but when we bought it, there were two side, I guess you'd consider them both side decks, maybe one of them was a rear deck. But there were two second floor decks that weren't a problem for either adjacent property. We got rid of one of them completely and cut the other one in half because of use and, and we wanted six feet downstairs. So I, I would hate to see it say absolutely can't have one if you're under a certain square footage of the lot. But, um, specifying the maximum depth of a side or a, side or rear second story deck would limit it, limit its use, so you wouldn't wind up with a lot of noise and people hanging out on it. But people who want to go sit outside and read a book or have their, you know, potted fruit trees on the back deck in, in a reverse floor plan house, which there are a lot of, especially in the Jewel Box, um, all of your living space is upstairs, so having an upstairs, small, you know, way to get outside is really nice.
So maybe decks just have to go through a special permitting process and then it will be up to the planning commission to say yes or no.
You can't really add a second floor deck without doing some kind of a reasonably substantial remodel to the, to get the, the structure. I mean, you can't just drop poles and build a deck on it. It doesn't work that way. Yeah.
Okay. Want me to re-summarize? Okay, so for second story decks, we'll add new criteria for requiring a special permit. There'll be, um, we could do an administrative permit with size restrictions and setback and separation standards. To go beyond that, it would go to planning commission for review in a public hearing. Okay.
Are we going to be seeing these, we're not gonna be seeing the, these finals before they go to the city council, correct? I mean, we're not gonna, so in other words, you're gonna flesh that out a little bit more before it goes to the city council. This is the first time I can think of thinking this, but I would rather see that, at least know what you've recommended or what you're going to include in those findings or whatever before it goes to the city council so that we feel like that's represented.
That's the matrix, isn't it?
Well, no, that, no, we're talking about new specific things.
They're coming out with new ones. So you could just email them to us and give us ten days to comment or?
Yeah, or less or whatever.
So we'll be doing the same process that we've just been going through with the city council, kind of talking at a little bit of a higher level, although, you know, some of these, by their nature, we gotta talk details. Um, then we'll draft the code based on what we heard and we'll come back. And that's where we'll really look at a lot of the wording and we're gonna really make an effort to try to highlight some of these areas to say, here's what we came up with. What do you think? Are we on the right path? Do we need to adjust it one or another?
So you're not gonna come up with these before it goes to the city council?
No.
Okay, great.
So you'd just be saying, you know, we're gonna come up with an administrative permit for side or rear decks and specify, um, size and setback standards? And if it is outside of those, then it goes to planning commission. That's as much as you're gonna give to city council and they'll say yes or no and.
Okay. So now on to the next, the last section of our update. Uh, multifamily homes and the single-family zone. This we've spent a lot of time on over the past month and doing, getting public input and feedback. So a dwelling unit is defined as one or more rooms in a dwelling designed for occupancy by one family for living or sleeping purposes and having only one kitchen. There are many different dwelling types of dwelling units throughout the city of Capitola. Uh, single-family homes with secondary dwelling units. There are also duplexes in which you have side-by-side or a configuration of two dwelling units within the same structure. And for the purpose of tonight's conversation, we'll be focusing on multifamily structures that have three or more dwelling units within one structure and that are located within the, um, the R1 zone. These are examples all over town, not specifically in the R1 zone. You've got the housing, the senior housing on Bay Avenue, and then another home up in, I think that's north of Capitola Road. Within our current zoning code, the subject of tonight's meeting is that the multi-family structures with three or more units in a single-family zone are non-conforming, and a non-conforming activity is an activity that was legal at the time that it was built, but since it was built, the code has changed and it is no longer permitted or has become a conditional use within the zone. A non-conforming multi-family home within Capitola, if it's located in the single-family zoning district, must discontinue or apply for an extension 50 years from the date the property became non-conforming, or by June 26, 2019, whichever date is later. So understanding this, we came to the conclusion, well, we need to figure out when all of these became non-conforming, because 2019 is quickly approaching. So here is a map of the city of Capitola, and the yellow is the single-family zone. The dots on the map that you see here are multi-family homes that became non-conforming in 1951. These are the properties that by 2019 must come in and apply for an extension. In 1976, a lot of the area on the west side of Capitola was, that was originally a multi-family zone, became single-family. So the properties you see in red in 1976 became non-conforming, so they must apply for an extension by 2026. Depot Hill was non-con, was multi-family up till 1979, so all multi-families with three or more units in Depot Hill are required to come in for an extension by 2029. This is good. It'll phase out the review process. And then in 1984, there was a building along Wharf Road that became non-conforming. So, from there, we, we know this 2019 date to be a little overwhelming, as it's a few years away, and we wanted to reach out to the public and make sure that property owners that do own these multi-families are aware of the current requirements of our code. So we distributed an online survey. We mailed it to all property owners within 300 feet that are located in the R1 of any of these multi-family homes. So the owners themselves were, received a notice and anyone within 300 feet. The online survey, we had 77 participants. We also held a public workshop on June 15th. We had approximately 40 attendees, and that was held right here in council chambers and also in our community room. So tonight, I'm going to go over what we heard from the public. This is, first, I'll talk about all respondents from the survey, and this is all of their results together. As you can see on the slide, this is, we asked what type of influence do multi-families have on your neighborhood? And it was a mix of results. There was, some people were very strong for, they're very positive, others found them to be negative, and then 21 of the 70 respondents said it had mixed emotions about whether or not just saying it's positive or negative, but that it's a mix, the influence. Then we, within the survey, we asked people which neighborhood they were located in, and so now I'm going to break down the results by neighborhood. I'm going to go from the neighborhood that stated it was the least impactful on them to the neighborhood which said multi-families are the most impactful. So in the Riverview to Monterey, you can see there's not very many of these. They're spread out. The concentration is not that high. In this neighborhood, the overall question of what type of impact do they have, it was, the majority said it was a positive influence on their neighborhood. When asked what types of factors were positive and negative, the positive influences, number one was affordability, followed by diversity, and also adding to the year-round residence. The negative influences, and this was, we saw this trend throughout the neighborhoods, parking was brought up as the number one negative, and then a mix of higher density overcrowded. There weren't that many negatives brought up within the Riverview to Monterey. When we asked how should we move forward with these properties for future, this is the one neighborhood where there was a lot of support to remove the required extension and allow multi-family uses to continue indefinitely, as long as they do not increase in size or number of units. You'll also see that there was support, that, I guess my numbering, it says A on the left, I'm sorry, but the fifth option down is to make sure these discontinue by 2019, and you'll see there was support from four people to make them go away altogether, so.
Katie, just a point of clarification, the, these results came from people that live or own in the Riverview to Monterey area?
Yes, yep, live or own. And you can see in the first column here is the survey results, and then the workshop results. So we had, we asked the same questions, just in a different format at the workshop, in order they could tell us which one they were most in favor of, so.
Were some people counted twice?
We did not count anybody twice. They had the, we had the survey there for them to take, so there may be some overlap. We didn't, we seemed to get a lot of, at the workshop, a lot of people put down notes. We had maps in which they could make comments about the maps, and people didn't really rate the options as much, you know, in the survey, it was very clear. I don't, I don't think all 40 people that were at the workshop told us exactly the direction they'd like this to go in the future, but they did give us a lot of good notes about the existing conditions. Okay, now we'll move on to the jewel box. And as you can see, it's a little more dense in the jewel box. There's more of a concentration of purple dots. There was definitely a mix of reviews, of green being positive, red being negative, and blue being a mix. When we asked the positive influences, the diversity came to the top, additional year-round residents. Also at the top was none, so that speaks loudly as well. Negative influences, parking, of course, rose to the top, poor building maintenance, and then also none, so.
Question, year-round residence versus second home, what does second home mean?
I would think of that as a vacation rental.
Okay.
So some people think it's a positive, that the person's not there all the time, and some people think it's a negative.
Yeah, there was definitely a mixed review.
Okay. Well, they're both positive, though. I mean, they, on that, on that pie chart, it's positive to have second homes, and it's positive to have year-round residence, so it's kind of odd.
When we asked, how would you like the city to move forward with these, there was a total of 11 people said to remove the required extension and allow multi-family uses to continue indefinitely. But there, if you look at the options A and E, there were five respondents who said to keep the current code, they'd like to see these reviewed, and E being to remove them altogether. So there's definitely a mixed review in the jewel box. Depot Hill, you start to see more of a concentration, and this was one of the last neighborhoods to convert to single-family, so here we, in the Depot Hill neighborhood and in the neighborhood north of Capitola Road, that's where the majority of the people that came to our public outreach came from. So here, the positive influences, diversity, affordability, and second home. The negative influences were overcrowded, higher density, and then parking, so starting to see a need for space up there. When we asked, how would you like the city of Capitola to regulate these into the future, it was really an even distribution of these options. Most of them are either, you know, keep the current or current code, or to require additional units to be taken away and to come into compliance with the code, or to make them go away altogether. So I would say the feedback here was to make sure the city does something to decrease the impacts of the multi-family and the single-family. There were six comments that were under the other, and that was within the workshop, and it was really where people were suggesting calculating this differently, like really looking at the value of the units to see, they were, they're all, they weren't clear towards a new suggestion on the code, but maybe calculating differently what we, how we define a unit, and. North of Capitola Road, I would say at least a third, if not half, of the people that came to our meeting were here to talk about north of Capitola Road. You can see the density is really tight, the units are close together, and the negative here rose to the top on the pie chart, so 25. The positive influences, again, were diversity, affordability, and then none. Negative influences, parking, which if you drive down one of those streets at 6:00 PM at night, it's very obvious. Poor building maintenance was also at the top of the list, and then trash. When asked, how do you suggest the city of Capitola treat these into the future, there was definitely a majority that would like to see these discontinued by 2019. And although we listed that as an option, we have the sunset clause currently, and an owner could come in and apply for an extension, so. We also took our results and filtered them between the owners or owner occup, they're either an owner or an owner occupant of the multi-family home versus owners or occupants of single-family homes or duplexes. Some of these are pretty predictable results, but for the owner occupant of multi-family homes, the neighborhood influence was overwhelmingly positive. There were no negative. They did see that there was a mix. And then the, from the single-family or duplex owners, what we heard was, you know, your typical breakdown of, a little bit of, there's some positive and a mix, but there's a negative component. When we asked, how, when we filtered it based on owner of multi-family versus single-family or duplex, the owners of the multi-family would like to have, remove the required extension and allow multi-families to continue indefinitely. And that's 10 responses, and there are approximately 50 of them out there, so that's about 20% of existing owners. And then the survey, when we asked owner occupants of single-family homes or duplexes, the results were, there's 38% to do away with them altogether, and then also support for keeping the current code and decreasing the number of units based on the existing conditions of the site. So, within our issues and options, we, the options were a little bit different from what we showed within our public outreach. The first option is to keep the current code. The second option is to remove the required extension and to allow multi-families to continue indefinitely, provided they don't, do not increase in size or number of units. The third was to modify the regulations to allow non-conforming multi-family uses to remain in targeted areas of the city, so we could define those areas where we want them to stay. Also, the fourth option is to rezone areas with high concentrations of multi-family into multi-family zones. And there's a couple of examples on the maps where that would be appropriate. Along Opal Cliff, there's, there's two condos, I'm sorry.
West, Opal Cliff?
In east, yes. There's two condos right along the water that are, they're condominiumized, it's private ownership, I think 12 units in east, 15? Yeah, so it, and there's parking. It's different. It's on the edge of a zone, it's across the street from Portola, so it's, it's different. The other area that I would say that the rezone would be appropriate for is on Monterey behind, is it Shorelife Church? They have multiple family, they've got multi-family units behind the church, and that area, the zoning kind of is divided over the parcel, and that's another area we should look at possibly rezoning multi-family. Otherwise, it may be looked at spot zoning unless you took in a whole neighborhood. And the fifth option was to create an incentive program to allow participating non-conforming property owners to retain their uses subject to providing specific public benefits. As we all know, there's a housing shortage and affordability issues within the city, and by creating incentive programs to allow these to continue and possibly putting on, like, affordable housing deed restrictions within, or requiring another approach would be to, for a public benefit, would be to have them work on street improvements such as additional parking or landscape improvements, but working towards a kind of a win-win approach within E. And then F would be other, for other ideas that you may have this evening. So, thank you, and I look forward to your comments.
Thank you. Questions of staff before?
I have, yes, I have a question. If we were to change our current ordinance and say not allow, not allow them and just, you know, stop that use, wouldn't the state of California come in and talk to us about that? I mean, isn't there, do you think, can you feature that they might change, or the county might change our allocation in the next go-around of, you know, housing? I just can't imagine, I don't, I don't imagine us doing it, number one, but I can't imagine if we did, that the state or the county would look favorably on us in the next go-around with a housing allotment.
I don't think you'd have a big issue on the housing element. I mean, it's a small fraction of our rental inventory, of which we have quite a bit in Capitola. And, you know, the whole idea of a housing element is that you show that you can accommodate your housing need, not actually have the units on the ground, so I, I don't think there would be a big problem with it.
How do they choose, how do they, how do we come about our allotment now within our, don't we, we work within the county, right? The county has given an allotment, and we work with other county municipalities and the county to?
So the State Department of Housing and Community Development sets the allocation by region. They give that number to Ambag, who then distributes it between Monterey and Santa Cruz counties. And then we kind of, you know, horse trade a little bit and see where those units are actually going to go.
So my question is, we get rid of our, some of our affordable and, you know, this kind of housing, I don't, we'll talk later, I just wanted to find out what, what that.
I think given the circumstance with the amount of rental housing we have here, that, you know, this, this wouldn't be a big issue, because it's a really small piece of the pie.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just clear one thing up for me? Because I asked this the other night under the, when we're talking about the housing element and the condo apartment conversion, because it seems to be in direct conflict here. So what am I missing? Seems like our condo apartment conversion is kind of strict in trying to discourage the conversion, but on the other hand, we have this ordinance that says that, you know, by starting 2019, we want to start doing that, so.
So.
Go ahead. Am I messed up here, Mike?
You know, I think the best explanation I've heard was from Commissioner Newman at that meeting as to the origin of the condo conversion policy, that it was put in place specifically to restrict certain developments from converting to condominiums. I don't think there's anything there necessarily, given our circumstances, that really, you know, preserves the rental stock as it is today. I mean, there would be some conversion. Would it be a big portion of it? I don't think so. I think the city could have the discretion to relax that if they wanted to, without running afoul of housing element policies or goals.
Right. So most of the units that we're talking about are rental units, these three and fourplexes. And I agree with your analysis. I think there are some parts of town where, you know, there's one or two here or there, and they're not particularly a big problem. When you look at the area, you know, sort of call it, you know, 46th, 47th, 48th, up in there, and you drive in that neighborhood, clearly, there's, there are problems in that neighborhood when it comes to parking, when it comes to dumpsters out in front, when it comes to, you know, there have been no improvement on those units. So I would love to see the city So, um, I, I would love to see the city come up with some sort of incentive program where these landlords, uh, you know, im- improve what they have, deal with, you know, the garbage cans all lined up, provide a little landscaping, um, you know, I don't know if the city pays to have an architect to work with them to see if, you know, there are a few treatments or something that can be done, uh, to improve it. Um, but it does seem to me that, um, you know, something needs to be done. And I understand that housing is, uh, critical. Um, my, from talking to someone who actually lives on this street, their impression is these are not low-income units by any means. Um, that, um, you know, some of them are, are charging quite high rents, and because we have, you know, sort of a housing shortage, they can, they can get away with that. So I, I would like to see some sort of incentive program developed that could im- improve that, that situation.
Before we open that up to, um, commission discussion, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
I'm just Elliot from Opal Cliff West, and I just wanted to see if we're gonna, if you guys are gonna take, I guess Katie's recommendation to, um, let us be in a multifamily zone, change it from single to multifamily.
Yeah, I, I absolutely, I think that's a, that's a no-brainer.
We have 15 owners.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think that's a no-brainer. You're not really part of a single-family residential neighborhood in Capitola. You're sort of sitting up there all by yourself, so I, I don't, I mean.
Well, they sent me here, so that's fine. I wanted to find out.
You can go home now.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know. I, I mean, I, I have a comment on that. We just finished the general plan, and, and the zoning was all a big part of that. And, and the two areas that you're talking about converting, at least one of them is an automatic review, but they left it R1. And the other one isn't even an R, um, an automatic review. So is it appropriate for us to change the zoning in the, in the zoning ordinance now after the general plan just came out with a new zoning map?
I, I think.
Well, that's the old zoning ordinance map, right?
I just printed it off our website today.
Right, but that's the, that's not the current, that's not the general plan map that's being proposed. The general plan map that's being proposed is.
Oh.
Different than that one that you have there.
There you go. Good catch. I printed it off today, assuming that that's what it was, but you're right, it's got a May.
Yeah, that's the old zoning map.
Right, so can I jump in here now, or you?
Is there anybody else that wants to? No, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Ed, you've got the floor.
Thank you. So, first reaction to this is I'm trying to think ahead when the first extension application comes up. And you've got.
So we have granted extensions to various properties.
Did you counsel next month?
Yeah, so here's, here's what I see, what I envision. The property owner is gonna be, uh, vehement in wanting to retain their property, and they're gonna lawyer up, and they're gonna, the tenants are not gonna want to lose their housing. And you may get a neighbor or two who's gonna show up, but basically, I mean, it's just not gonna happen that you're gonna, there's gonna be some kind of demolition of an existing housing complex. It's just not realistic. I mean, I just don't see that happen.
And I don't, I don't think they need to be demolished. I'm, I'm, I'm not advocating getting rid of them, because I agree with you. I recog, I don't, first of all, I think that would be a hard thing to stand up to legally. I don't know exactly how it would all work. I just want a few improvements.
So we could, well, I mean, the, the incentive idea, I mean, it has some merit. I mean, I'd like to see how it is, is really gonna work. So, I mean, I don't know if that, but, um, we don't have to have the same non-conforming rules for the uses that we have for the design elements that we just did. I mean, it could be just the opposite, which is sort of my thinking is, you know, when the thing falls down, then you gotta comply with the rules.
But this isn't a single-family neighborhood, so if they could tear these down and rebuild them.
No, no, but I'm saying we don't have to have the same rule. We don't have to allow them to rebuild for use.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That we do for design standards, and I think maybe we want to go the opposite way on use and say, you know, you cannot structurally improve this property. It's got a useful life, and a lot of these are like across from the shadow, I mean, they're looking like they're getting near their useful life. But that doesn't help us for a while, they just look worse and worse and worse for the next.
Right, I think that's part of the problem in this neighborhood, that landlords are just letting them go. And, um, you know, there are a few that have been approved, but the majority of them are just, you know, deteriorating. And, um, you know, maybe an incentive program would be to come up with a plan that when someone comes in to ask for an extension, we say, well, if you want to extend the life of this kind of unit, then you have to, you know, meet these requirements. You have to have an enclosure for your garbage units. You have to, um, you know, um, do some.
Cause I looked up and, um, if they were in a, um, multifamily zone, the parking works. They, they've all got acceptable parking, which surprised me.
Except they park in the right-of-way.
Right.
I mean, they're not.
Well, and also, I, you know, I just wonder if there's ever gonna be, especially if we redo this and continue to allow that, is there ever gonna be an ADA challenge with people who can't access, they have to go out into the street with their wheelchair or whatever in order to, um, I worry about that.
I mean, you can't put curb-guttered sidewalk in this neighborhood, or you take away half of the parking, cause they're parking in the right-of-way.
But the houses also have, you know, except for the houses that have been redone, they have the same problem.
I was seeing a lot of short driveways where the cars are, you know, parked out.
I, I have a quick question for staff. When the application comes in for review, does it ever get noticed?
Um, so when the application comes in, it'll be put on the agenda for sure, but it's, it's an extension of a non-conforming, and I don't believe we have noticing requirements for an extension of a non-conforming.
It seems to me that you, you know, I kinda, I kinda have the same concerns that, that Ed has, and, um, you know, I know that they're, they're, they're gonna be here to stay for a while, and I don't think we can just take that away. But I think maybe if, if the landlords, obviously they're gonna, and the tenants want to keep their property, that if we have people in the community that have their concerns, at least maybe there's some negotiations that could happen there at that time, that if they were there to voice their concerns, that the property owner could maybe make some commitment to take care of it. And I, I agree. I, I came the, the night of the, uh, public forum, and, and I heard the concerns more specifically about this neighborhood, about trash. It only gets picked up once a week, and it's overflowing, and they use other people's dumpsters, and those type of things. Seems like there's remedies for that if, um, you know, if, if they come in for that application review, but it would be nice if we noticed the neighborhood.
Do we know, you showed, um, early on, you showed a map of the Sunset, who comes up in 2019 and 2026. Can you put that back up?
Don't we already have an ordinance that says you can't keep your garbage can out all the time? I mean, we have that in place now, don't we?
You don't apply to, I think.
They don't apply to multifamily residents?
I mean, I don't know, but these, these are here all the time.
I thought that only applied to new construction. You had to build a, um, I think like.
Well, I think it's the idea of, uh, using the extension vehicle to upgrade to some extent and, and mitigate problems is the best we're gonna do.
Right.
Realistically with this.
And that means you've got till 2026 for the majority of the problem.
Right, but some people, if they're gonna want to refinance their building or do something in between, I mean, that's the reason most people have come in to ask for an extension is cause they wanted to refinance their building, and with this ordinance in place, the Bay wouldn't let them. And I'm just trying to encourage the, you know, I don't know who does it, the planning staff, the city architect, somebody come up with some ideas for how these could be improved, so at least, you know, the council's not just sitting there with no information at all about what could be done. I mean, even if you put in, you know, curb-guttered sidewalk in these areas, it would do a lot to clean things up. It would eliminate.
Half their parking.
Underground utilities, then we could really.
You know, it's more garbage and, I mean, there, there's no landscaping anywhere. I mean, these are pretty bleak-looking up there.
Do, are there any kind of fees that they pay that could be used as an incentive for them to do more?
Um, there's, so you, you could create a taxing district, but that's really a neighborhood initiative that we wouldn't start. But there, you know, and, and if they had a taxing district, because they have more units, the, those units, those structures would pay more into the taxing, uh, district to make improvements to the street. But otherwise, I don't think we have a tool in which to.
Can you go back to the slide that shows the front with the carports? And I'm just kind of wondering whether there's also ways to, to look at parking on, on the sites, more efficient ways to look at parking on sites today than just the tandem or the, you know, me, you know, is, is there a chance that the parking can go per, uh, you know, uh, parallel to the building, parallel to the street in some situations and get more parking? Or is it, you know, I think that should just be looked at at least, because probably back then it wasn't a big deal, and they just did it the old, old way. Maybe there's, at least on one or two properties, if you're looking at, you know, redoing parking, that's worth it. I mean, would it be worth it for us to say, get rid of the carports? If, if it created more parking, are we willing to trade those carports for another one or two parking spaces? I would be willing to.
I think there's a lot of those for storage, too. There's a lot of storage containers in there.
We have to, at this point, we're not gonna be able to deal with every specific.
Right.
Element. We have to, this is Ben's drafting challenge here, is to come up with some language that when people come in for an extension allows the planning commission, or the staff, or the city council to come up with a set of requirements that are a condition, you know, a trade-off for the extension, basically.
And the extension now is for 50 years?
Mm-hmm.
Should we reduce that from 50 years to 10 years?
Well, I think the extension, that, that's all set up. I can't remember what section of the code that gives them a 50-year extension, uh, but we could.
It states a, that extensions granted under this section shall be at least 50 years from the date the application is granted. So there is, I'd like to read to you what the city council findings are now that need to be made under today's code. The city council shall only grant an extension if able to make findings that, in this particular situation, the appearance, condition, and management of the property is such that the property is not greatly detrimental to the single-family residential character of the neighborhood in which it is located. The extension is necessary in order to prevent a major economic loss to the property owner and to lessen deterioration, and that all reasonable conditions have been imposed for the purpose of repairing dilapidated, dilapitation and bringing or keeping the property up to the neighborhood's standards. So when the city council reviews it, they will be looking at the management, the upkeep, um, of these properties. And what we've been at, what we've been listing in our requirements to go forward for an extension is also to give us a 10-year history of the, you know, what investment have you put into this property, so they can look at that, but, um.
I think it could be, those are good. I think it could go a little further than that. And require, actually require some upgrading. And I think, Commissioner Tupper raised is a good point, that people have come in for an extension because they want to refinance, and the lender, they don't need 50 years, but they probably need more than 10.
Yeah. Maybe something in between, so that.
25 years is, you know, maybe a commercial loan max.
Mm-hmm.
Is that considered commercial lending, multifamily?
Yeah. At the, single-family or occupied.
Cause the other observation with the survey was that this area got the most negative input, and it's, it's clustered. If you look at all of the other neighborhoods, they're spread out. They're not clustered in, in one place. And so it's really, it feels to me like, besides the, the visual, it's the parking. I mean, it's parking that really makes it painful in an R1 zone.
So I, I have an odd one, uh, on, on the particular street that we showed. I like the idea of, um, uh, you know, trying to do some sort of neighborhood assessment district. And to, to improve that area, perhaps do some curve-outs in the street, so you could leave the tandem parking there, but have sidewalks, get some landscaping. And to do anything like that, um, what you have to get is that the, uh, property owners all agree to it, because they end up being the ones who pay for it. Um, and as Kitty said, the multifamilies would pay more than the single-family houses because they, they have more there. So I, I would like to see when they come in and ask for an extension, that they agree that they would participate in any kind of, you know, assessment district if it is formed to help improve those neighborhoods.
That would be reasonable. I'm wondering why people would agree to having an assessment when we do it, you know, as a matter of course in other neighborhoods. You know, we're doing it on clares, we do, you know, traffic calming and that kind of thing, you know, we, we just, it's within our, our street repairs and our, um, capital improvement projects. Why, how would I as a neighbor in that neighborhood feel? I would, I would ask, why, why do I have to pay for it when other neighbors don't have to pay for it?
Well, when I lived on Bay Avenue, I had to pay for the sidewalk that went in front of my house.
Well, we do all have to pay for sidewalks.
But it was an assessment district, and that's how they put those sidewalks in.
Because they wanted them in all at once.
They wanted them in all at once, and so, you know, you got assessed and had to pay for it on your taxes. The city didn't pay for it. Capitola's been pretty inconsistent on who they've made pay for sidewalks and who they haven't made pay for sidewalks. But, um, you know, in this particular streets, y- you would have to do a pretty elaborate plan, and even if the assess- assessment district paid for part of it so they could have additional landscaping and some of those things, I just don't think it hurts to add, to say to the guy, you, you have to agree to participate if we get there.
And it sounds like this is a good time, because a lot of people have been thinking about it. They've been notified about it, they've talked about it. They, you know, they might see that improvement now as a great benefit since they have, their focus has been there.
Right. But it would be, I mean, which is, I, I think it's, you know, like you say, Capitola needs to look at improving some of these neighborhoods, just like we improve other neighborhoods. It's unfortunate we haven't done anything.
Well, it kind of feels like way back when, when they put in the Sunset clause, they kicked the can down the, down the road, and we would be getting close to the end on nine units. But it's not the right nine units, perhaps.
There, um, when we had our options that we discussed, that we brought up to, uh, in the survey and to the public workshop, one included that if there is inadequate space on-site for parking or for, um, that one option be that they have to actually decrease the allowed density of the site. Is that something you would like to see incorporated in this, when we're talking about, well, we could toughen it up a little bit more, or you see?
And I don't see how it's realistic. I mean, how do you take a triplex and make it into?
Somebody's value of their property now is all of a sudden disinterred.
You know, I mean, I, I look at, at this one right here, and, you know, I think whoever said, get rid of the carport, do some, you know, just have it to be a parking area, because you're gonna have to come up with someplace to put dumpsters and other ki- I mean, someone, and, and I've thought about this a lot, is gonna have to be very creative on coming up with a design that improves these.
But they're out there, those ideas are out there. Other communities are grappling with this. People, you know, there's great designers in California right now. And I think, you know, is it an angled, you know, a, not perpendicular, but is it an angled parking that creates more? There's got to be a way to create more parking. This just looks haphazard and it's not the best way, so.
Okay. Let me go to the last slide. So, what I'm hearing this evening is to keep the current code, but also to consider an incentives program in which we, well, one is to change the extension maximum to 25 years, require upgrades so that aren't specified, but it'll be specific to each property. Require them to agree to participate in an assessment district when they ask for their extension. And then to be looking for creative design solutions to the existing issues. So, and the city playing a role in that. Is that right? Yeah, is that, and is that citywide or is that direction for specific neighborhoods?
Well, I think it's general enough that it could be citywide because they're going to, the council's going to deal with the units that come in. For example, if one of the units in Riverview Terrace comes in, it sounds like people didn't have a problem with those and they're functioning and there's obviously, you know, some have parking problems and something don't. So, it's like the council's going to have to deal with it when people come in and ask for the extension. And I would like to, you know, keep it in there so people do have to come in and ask for the extension because that gives you a mechanism to do something.
And is the option there for noticing the neighborhoods? Is that, I know it's expensive.
And we can, you can require permits that are similar to, say, a CUP or a variance to require extensions. So, we could begin applying that now. And for any extension, make sure that neighborhood, neighbors are notified because we will have one going to city council next month.
So, the first few that come in under this new rules that we're favoring here, and I guess there are some on the way now even before this goes through, are going to be important because they're going to kind of set the tone for future people. And whoever's, there's one coming to the council, they, I hope they will understand that they need to be careful about the first few here.
The one that's coming is in Riverview Terrace.
Okay. Well, at least in your report, you'll tell them this is-
It's the one on Oak Street.
This is under review in the new zoning ordinance.
It just sold or it's in the process? I think the sale is contingent upon the extension, but-
Right.
Is it Oak?
So, is that on Oak?
Is it on Oak?
It's on the corner, I believe, of-
Beverly?
Beverly and Oak.
It's the little red-
Oh, the little red cabin.
With the duplex next to it.
So, there was a comment in the report that came out that I sent me over because I knew the person who owned that property before. And the comment that they made about creating a monster house in the back with no yard, zero lot line, that comment apparently came from the public. But the address is 526 Oak is the only one that could possibly be overlooking that property. And I would not consider that a monster house by any stretch. It was really well done.
In fact, I think they reduced it from their, I used to live across the street when they built that house and they reduced, I think, the original design from that. It's a nice house.
And the other point of clarification that I forgot was the support for the zone change for the condos.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the same thing for the church. They came in and those were some affordable units that they built in the back of the church. And I think we should support that one too.
Just to properly gauge expectations, all the rezones and basically everything we do is going to have to be certified by the coastal commission. You know, those sites along the coast, they might have a special interest in and not want to see them continue, so, despite what the city might want to see.
So, while you want to be done, I have some comments about the whole stuff. And it'll go really fast, I think.
We got time.
So, on issue number three, where we talked about increased parking flexibility, we said allow greater commercial parking flexibility through shared parking studies for multi-tenant, commercial properties, no residential. And I wanted to say, I don't have a problem with office uses and stuff in residential. My issue comes when you have residential and retail that, you know, ends up staying open until nine o'clock or, and so, I think we could expand that a little bit to make it clear that we're not concerned about the office uses. And on the, one, the issue number five B, in sort of the middle of the page, we had the note, the aside. And I just wanted to make it clear that, for me, I was asking for employee parking in the Lower Pacific Cove parking lot. You know, some sort of program for employees to be able to park in there, particularly during the winter months, so we didn't have them parking in the neighborhoods. Or it could even be in the upper parking lot as far as I'm concerned in the wintertime. But it was to try and come up with a way to help encourage employees to park there instead of the sort of neighborhood streets.
So, in a city-sponsored parking lot, is that what you're talking about?
Right, that we would, you know, somehow give employees some sort of permit that they could park in there during the week in the wintertime. It's not, it's empty and, you know, I would rather see them parking there than instead of in front of my house.
Excuse me, Commissioner Westman, how would you like that to be changed? Because that, do you want it specified to the lower Pat Cove?
Well, in one, you know, city, maybe you could say city parking facility. So, it could be lower and upper because there are spaces in the upper parking lot in the wintertime during the week, in winter months.
And if the lower parking lot goes away, then we won't have to change it?
Yes. So, I'm looking for where it is on medical offices. Because I thought, when we talked, we said that we didn't object to medical offices being in retail areas except for the zoning district that includes the Capitola Mall, starting at Capitola Avenue going forward.
Look at issue four. I think that's what you're talking about.
Three, where's four? Yeah, on issue four, you know, I know that there are some council members who want to be real restrictive to new medical offices going in. And I thought we sort of backed away from that and said the only place we would see it a problem would be in that one zoning district.
They're saying north of Capitola Road. I think we use Capitola Road as the delineation. And south was okay and north was not. Is that right?
Right. And I didn't think that there was sort of only partial support for that. I thought we all pretty much agreed.
The partial support was on the findings for professional medical office use, that, to add findings because it's a difficult task to gauge. But I think under option three, it wasn't just partial support. Option three, there was, I think, unanimous support.
Okay. I just wanted to make certain that we were straight on that. And when we talked about the architectural insight review committee and who's going to be on the makeup, we just listed an architect.
What issue is it?
And I thought we had said it's issue number 11.
Thank you.
I thought we'd said that we wanted the city architect or someone from their firm to do it because we didn't want a local architect who's actually doing work here in town to be the architect on the ark insight committee.
Okay, under the first bullet, it says all positions on committee to either, to be either staff or contract on an as-needed basis.
So, we're just going to say architect, not city architect?
I think it doesn't hurt to say city architect.
City architect and city-
I think what we talked about was that that would be a staff person or a contract, but the contract we talked about from like a historical architect may need to come in from time to time with a contract with them, is that right?
But that was one, but also the city architect was the other.
I think that was supposed to be a staff or contracted. It wasn't going to be an at-large.
Right.
But because it's not a city position, it'd be, I can do a contracted city architect. How does that sound?
Yeah, something like that.
That's what the first bullet says, isn't it?
Yeah, it does.
It captures it, yeah.
It does. And if you're going to change it in architect, you should change it with architectural historian as well. So, maybe it's better, you know, all positions in committee, be it staff or contract on. All right, so, contract on as needed maybe doesn't say it specifically enough. Maybe we need to be more specific that they are, you know, they are the continuously contracted person who is, you know, it's not just, because we're contracting now with the architectural historian and it's, that's what we're trying to change. So, if you could find language that talks about it being the contractors that work with the city on these issues.
Just remove the "on as-needed basis" and just say either staff or-
No, because-
Mission consultants.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, something, I mean, you can-
Just so that people understand it's those who we work with all the time.
Yes, I was just trying to get away like on the architect of not having, you know, the way we have it set up right now, we, our architect often is someone who's doing a lot of business in town and that creates a conflict. So, we wanted someone who would be a little more neutral.
Good to add the details so there's no question later.
That's all you have.
Does anybody else have matrix items that they want to bring up tonight?
I've got a few that were good.
I've got a couple that I wanted to bring up. On issue 18, this is the city council appeal of the planning commission. The process is really well nailed down here. But my notes said that there would be an option for either a full new review or a, just a specific condition of the planning commission's decision that could get called up. Did we change that so it's a full review period? If they decide to call it up, they have to hear the whole thing?
If you'd like, we can add that language, that the call-up can be specific to one item within the application.
I'd like them to hear the whole, if they're going to call it up, they ought to hear the whole thing.
Sure, because, yeah.
Okay. Those are my, were just my notes and I wanted to make sure that. The other thing, let's see, the height, how measured? That's going to be included now in the height discussion?
I go back, I think, was it a cost issue tied to that? I remember the discussion, I'm sorry, I'm going back to where you're talking about the call-up. It seemed, did we have a discussion about if they do a full review, then it costs more staff time other than-
But the applicant pays that.
Well, I know that's a concern is because somebody calls a friend and now it gets called up, it costs applicant money, or, you know.
But you have to have two members agreeing now.
No, I get that, but I think that, I thought that was our discussion though was why it was, it could be specific to the reason they-
I don't think it would be a big difference. I mean, it might be a modest increase.
It seems to me that was our discussion, was about staff time or cost.
Well, it seems like you won't have to do any more staff work on it, the same, because by law, right, the same application has to go to the council so that they're comparing apples to apples. So, that's not a cost. And they still have to have their architect here to represent them or a representative, whether it's specific or the whole thing. So, I can't really see how, I know what you're saying though as far as-
I was just trying to recall our discussion, seemed like the discussion had to do with staff more than it had to do with-
But I don't see how the city council can take an appeal of a decision by the planning commission on a permit and not reconsider the permit.
Right.
Okay. I'm good with that. In the 41st Avenue discussions that we had, we wanted to see specific elements put in for like lumens on a commercial sign and specify that. And it's not reflected in here, but does that go into the detail that you guys have? So, it's going to show up someplace? Okay. Let's see. Item three, accommodating high-quality development on 41st Avenue. Option five, it says only requiring a design permit for commercial uses which involve significant exterior modifications. And my notes said and large projects. But the one above it says that we would allow, if they're over XX square feet, they would require a conditional use permit and a conditional use permit would bring them to us, correct? So, it's really exterior modifications and big projects will come to us. And I think-
It's only significant exterior modification. So, if they're going to just move a door or a window or something, we, right, and somebody will have to figure out what significant is.
So, remember, we're going to get another crack at all this when it comes out.
I don't think we do. This is going to go, I mean, they're going to get this and then it's going to go to council in this form before we see it again.
And they're going to develop the ordinance and then it's coming back to us.
And then we'll see you again.
And we'll work, Smith. Yeah, work, Smith.
So, yeah, so some of these things will-
The only other one I had an issue with and I just can't not be, not say it. Sorry, I'm just going to quit. Historic preservation. I know this is what it said after the minutes, but it just-
Which number is that?
Issue number six. It says, "Do not include any of the options. And as the new historic preservation ordinance is drafted, have architectural historian Leslie Dill and local historian Frank Perry review the draft ordinance." That doesn't really tell them anything about what direction we want to go.
What the draft ordinance would be, right.
Right. Are we okay leaving it with that?
So, there was definitely, the direction that night was to move forward with the five items that were specified as like not options, but the, what we were going to, you know, the first five items that we're going to do. So, is that, do you think it's lacking that information?
I think maybe, yeah. This just says, I mean, it left me with the impression when I read it again this time that Leslie Dill and Frank Perry are going to give direction on how you draft the new ordinance. And I don't think that's what really came out of our discussion. So, I didn't want to leave council with that impression.
I'll add, I'll list the five items to be completed within.
Thank you, that's all I have. And you'll send us a copy of the matrix that you present to council?
I will, yeah.
And when will that be presented?
You know, I could probably put it in your next packet for the meeting that's two weeks away. So, I like to do these the next day because that's fresh.
But you know when it's going to the city council?
What's that?
When it's going to, when the city council's going to hear this.
We are working on that date originally.
If you could just let us know once you have a date, that would be great because-
I think the first meeting in August, the council meeting, off the top of my head, I want to say maybe the 10th or 13th, somewhere around there. We're going to give a summary of what we've heard from the planning commission, maybe try to identify a couple of issues that we can knock off the list based on the feedback that we've heard from them previously and then set a schedule at that meeting.
You know, I, my dream is, and I can't figure out how to do it, I would love to have someone from the coastal commission come and talk to us. But I know, I know that, you know, and sort of explain to us their philosophy and, you know, what they look at when they're evaluating, you know, what the village and what's going to go on. Because it's like this elephant that's always in the room and, you know, having been a staff person, I know it's very hard to get a clear answer from them. You know, they always say, "Well, we'll review your document when it comes in."
They came to a lot of the general plan sessions. Yes.
Did it say anything?
Yeah, once in a while, he did.
But they were Coastal Commission people. That was Lester and Ed and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're not, he's retired. He doesn't work for the Coastal Commission anymore.
Oh, he doesn't?
No.
I'll put out an invite. I'd like to hear that, too.
Yeah, and, you know, it's not to have an adversarial conversation with them. I would just be curious where the Coastal Commission is right now as far as, you know, manning, retreat, water, how do they feel about, you know, what is the Coastal Commission's philosophy on some of those issues?
I think we should articulate what it is we would like, what it is we would like them to talk about and what kinds of questions we would be asking them. Because if I was a member of the Coastal Commission staff and I was invited to a city meeting, and I didn't know what they were going to, I probably wouldn't go.
Or, I mean, I'm so desperate, I would be willing to let them come and make a presentation, and we would say that we wouldn't ask any questions, you know, other than, you know, minor clarifications of what they talked about. But, I mean, I would, I would love to know where they're at right now.
One thing you may want to look at, if you haven't already, is the Coastal Commission has released draft sea level rise guidance. They stress it's not regulatory. I think every city and county that's affected by it fears that it is. But it's pretty drastic changes that they have in there.
Isn't there a fairly recent one that's been a new local coastal plan in one of the?
Yeah, there's been a few, Solana Beach, Grover Beach, and I believe it's either San Mateo County or Marin County recently went through the process. And they're a little bit different. I've reviewed them, but they do talk about sea level rise, and they've extended the life of a building, whether it be residential or commercial. Right now, it's 50 years in our LCP, most older LCPs. They want to see minimum life of 75 years for residential using no sea protective devices, sea walls, revetments or anything like that, and at least 100 years of life for any commercial building. Looking at the projections, that means you don't develop in the Village or, you know, the ocean side of Depot Hill.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be pretty dramatic, and I think we just don't quite understand how much of an impact, you know, we sort of think we get to decide how Capitola Village is going to be developed and what's going to go on down there. And the reality is, we're not the last group to decide. It's they, they get to decide for us how it's going to be. And it'd be interesting to hear their current philosophy and status. So, I'd appreciate it if you would invite them.
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to.
The planning commissioners will be willing to listen.
Yeah, I'd love to.
Do they, do they get to stop what's going on? Or do they, are they sort of held to the same standard we are where there's got to be a development requested before you can really?
Well, I think their standard, and Rich can help me with this, is that there needs to be a development request. I mean, they're not going to come in and say to, you know, the restaurants down on the Espinade that they can't continue to operate. But, you know, I have some concerns about if we have a next major storm that does significant damage to those buildings. I'm not certain that, from what little I've read, that they're going to say, "No, you do get to rebuild those buildings and continue to operate." You know, they, they have some strong feelings, you know. We hear from people, "Well, we want to, you know, close the Espinade and eliminate the parking down there." And at one point, Coastal Commission's stance was absolutely not. Those parking spaces are, you know, vital coastal access spaces. So, you know, that's not something that the city can do. So, it would be interesting to hear where they are so we don't spin our wheels and waste a lot of time and, you know, hopefully come up with a plan and a zoning ordinance that they're going to approve because my nightmare is, we're going to send it to them, it's going to take a long, long time, and they're going to send it back to us and say, "Go back to the drawing board and start all over." And you don't want a zoning ordinance that's in half the city and another zoning ordinance in the other half of the city. That's a real nightmare.
I'd like to continue this discussion to the next planning commission here. Oh, you're not going to be there.
I'm not going to be there, but that's okay. You can keep talking. I'm just, I'm just going on.
Next opportunity.
Yeah, next opportunity.
Okay, any staff report, directors reporting?
Lengthy presentation for you this evening. Sit back and enjoy now, we're all done.
A filibuster.
Anybody want to say anything at the risk of having them take you out? Nothing will adjourn the meeting.
Well, if he's going to continue to call me Commissioner Tupper.
That's right, I did that like three years ago, remember? And I haven't gotten over it.
It's okay, it's okay.